To go count your clockwise. Uh, Vince Workman, City Council.
Dan Keely, City Council.
Eric Schultz, City Council.
Dan Gustafson, City Council.
All right, here's Paula Wirth, Director.
St. Community Development Director.
Bethany Brewer, Organizational Development Manager.
BJ Johnman, Fire Chief.
Beth Svet, Police Captain.
Crystal Larson, Communications and Community Engagement Director.
Dan Titter, Interim Finance Director.
Joel Turner, Time Interim Finance Director.
You do like to rub it in.
I don't, I don't have a joke like Dan. Greg Lindberg, City Manager.
And um, City Manager, you're a loopers. You have any remarks before I uh, um, go to the first item?
Uh, sure, Madam Mayor, actually, the first item tonight uh is a presentation on our long awaited organizational analysis. Reflective of uh quite a bit of work that both our consulting partners and our staff have done uh to get you some more information on what we believe are the important priorities for staffing moving forward. Uh, just a couple of comments about the, about the project. Uh, as you're well aware, we partnered with uh Clifton Larson Allen or CLA uh to conduct uh staff input. So both through surveys as well as direct interviews with staff and also to do kind of the comparative data work uh for the project. Um, as that concluded in their final draft report came to us, I asked our HR staff to really contextualize uh the information that uh that they had put together uh to make it uniquely Burnsville, really to understand our operations and work with our leadership team uh to best bring uh bring you a presentation tonight uh about the uh about what the plan could look like moving forward uh for our staffing needs. Um, a couple of comments before I turn it over to Bethany to uh to present that information for you and answer any questions that you have. Um, uh, one of the things that we've recognized is that this is, this is very much going to continue to be an iterative process. We have some good information for you tonight, and we also recognize the need as a leadership team to come back to you with some conversations and some more information about department service level and demands. Uh, so I really do that as a second large step in the process. Uh, as you recall, um, back in April, uh, we had agreed that staff would take two months to come back to you on June twenty eighth uh at our next budget session uh with a proposed budget. Then I would work with our department heads and we would put uh the, the kind of the real work into operationalizing what we talked about to this point. Uh, our ask tonight is that uh we do the same through those service conversations with you uh in that you give us the, uh, continue to give us the space to do that work. There's some additional refining that we'll need to do uh with the information that's being put in front of you tonight. Uh, but I am very much excited uh to have this conversation. It's long awaited. I know both by you and from my perspective uh from staff. Um, uh, and allowing us to kind of continue on that path towards our next budget conversation. Things that will position us uh in the best place to uh uh to make the, to make the right move forward.
Thank you uh for that uh, those opening remarks. But before I turn to Bethany, I am going to just let everyone know that this meeting is both in person and online and uh all council members and our staff are present in the council chambers. We do have some folks in the audience uh and I'm going to also have them introduce themselves.
Hi there, I'm Kaylee Nate Johnson. I am the Organizational Development Consultant.
I'm Chris Stoka. I'm with MWF Properties here for uh Agenda Item Number Two.
Great.
In a more opportunistic cable.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So it's both online and uh and in person. Members of the public uh can attend in person if they like, or the public can also watch our meetings at burnsvilleamanda.gov slash meetings or on Comcast Channel sixteen or eight fifty-nine. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us slash meetings. And more information is available uh on our meetings webpage and in the council agenda packet. And the first item, we go straight to the items uh in our sessions. And the first item is our organizational analysis presentation. And Bethany Brewer, our Organizational Development Strategic Initiatives Manager is presenting. Welcome, Bethany.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council and everyone um here. Thank you so much uh for being here. And I'm excited to, like Greg said, share with you this sort of long awaited um work that we staff have been doing with uh our CLA, our partner, over the past um six months or so. Um, just to give you an idea of, of the slides and the, the, what we're going to talk about this evening, you all do have, have slide uh in front of you. Um, we'll look a little bit at the organizational analysis study, some of the background and themes um from, from that, some of the organizational data that we um found as part of that study. Um, and then we'll look into the recommendations both by year and by department. So just to give you a little bit of a, a snapshot of um what we learned uh in partnership with CLA. Um, like Greg said, right, to, to, to remind us all about what we um were here to do, what you asked us for um a while ago was to partner with a consultant um to really conduct an analysis of our organization to find out if we have the right number of people in the right places to best serve our community. Um, and that's the lens through which we um partnered with this and looked, looked through the study to make sure um that we have the best structure in place um to meet the needs of our community. Um, just to give you a little um picture of how the, the process went with um CLA, one of the things that was really important to us was that um all of our employees had an opportunity to be heard through the process, um how they were experiencing work, um what was going well, what might need to be improved from their perspective and their insights. Um, so CLA um offered both an online survey as well as um they came on site and had in-person conversations with employees. So we had about one hundred and sixty-three employees respond to the survey, about ninety-six um had personal in-person conversations with CLA. Um, so really representative of almost everyone in the organization, um representative of every department. Um, really, really being there and showing up to share um their experiences. Uh, what, some of the things that we learned through the survey and through those conversations, some of the key themes um that we took away from there. Uh, of course, employees take pride in working in Burnsville. They value our culture and, and really appreciate our community. Some of the things employee experience, right, they expressed some concerns regarding the increased demands um for service, some of the increased demands they're feeling and sort of feeling burned out and behind on some of their work. Um, we recognize some opportunities to improve some processes and systems through um the recommendations and through what we heard from employees. Um, just something to note to me that something that stood out right from the, the survey themes. Um, even though about forty percent of our employees report feeling engaged at work. Um, in our survey, half of the respondents said they had seriously considered leaving their job in the last year. Um, so just something.
Not like reading.
No, exactly, Mayor. And so something that strikes me, right, as, as we wanna, we really obviously care about our employees' well-being um and want to make sure that we continue to be a place that um provides great experiences for our employees so that they can provide a great experience in our community. Um, so something for us to think about, right, as we're um responding to this, as we're listening to employees. Um, want to making, wanting to make sure that we're factoring in their well-being and then their, their voices through um through our response here. Um, just a little bit, so that was some of the qual- qualitative information we received from employees. Um, of course, the, the, the analysis, the study obviously looked at some, some quantitative things as well. Um, one of the things that we talked about that you had asked for was, was some of the comparison really just to sort of the FTE per, for our one thousand residents or per, per capita um throughout sort of our, our history and, and the last, um, we have here the last sixteen years. So if you see sort of um the, the population in the line there of employees and our sort of FTE per one thousand residents. Um, the population in Burnsville has grown about five and a half percent since two thousand and six. Um, during that time, of course, staffing levels decreased and then have just about come back to up to where we were in two thousand and six. Um, it's, it's pretty close for within about two FTE from twenty-two thousand and six. Um, with, with that, again, population increase of five and a half percent. Um, just something to think about here, right? And we'll get into this a little bit as we go, but just a pause here to say when we're looking at um that sixteen years of time, um, two thousand and six was the year before the smartphone was, was introduced, right? So certainly um a huge difference in the way we experience life um since then. So while this is a, an interesting metric, it just doesn't tell the whole story, right? There's, there's more to what, how folks are experiencing their needs in the community and, and how we're responding to those things um that we'll talk about a little bit as we go forward. Um, another thing, just another perspective numerically to think about is each of our departments and sort of how they've grown and changed and evolved since that time too. Um, so the majority of our departments um are, are within um a few FTE from sort of their highest or from where they were at in two thousand and six. The majority of depart- departments, though, are still um under that um, that level or where we are at in two thousand and six. You can kind of see um in this sort of, when we look at it from all of our departments from two thousand and six and now, there's certainly been an evolution, right, of who's reporting to where and what services um are happening in what department. So it does, it's a little hard to capture in one graph um or one chart. Um, but you can kind of see, we're still making up ground in some of, and some of the, these departments back from, from where we were. Um, when we think about, right, there's, there's some numbers there. When we think about what the bigger picture is, like I said, right? Life is a little bit differently, different uh now. The diversity of our community and their needs has certainly evolved since then. Um, the demand for service, the complexity of the needs, the expectations of our community. You know, the employment environment, for one thing, right, is very competitive right now, and that focus on employee well-being and flexibility is really, really important. Um, to think about, right, communication is expected to be instantaneous and accurate, and um there's just a, a lot more going on. Um, staff are certainly feeling that they're being asked to do more with less, and sort of that Burnsville way, which we can take pride in. And we want to make sure it just doesn't start to become at the expense of our employees' well-being. So listening to that throughout this, um, this conversation has been important to us. Um, just to contextualize that a little bit more, when we think about um some of those, how that's actually being felt in the organization. Just for, for informational purposes, we spend about two point one, we pay them about two point one email, um, one eight million dollars on um employee overtime each year. Um, about ninety, when we asked our managers, about ninety percent of them report working fifty hours a week or more. Um, and of that ninety percent, actually twenty percent reported sixty hours a week or more, and ten percent reported seventy. Um, that's just obviously an estimation over the year, but just again, when we're thinking about um uh about work, and then we think about um employee turnover, really, there's, there's some actual um realization of some costs there. Uh, when we think about Gallup estimates, that employee turnover costs between thirty and fifty percent of an employee's salary. Um, just so when we were losing um someone, it can, it can cost us somebody to then refill the position and obviously get back to the point where we're being productive again. Oops. Went down the wrong way. Um, again, just carrying on with a little bit more information, when we think about some of our market cities and how um they could, we compare to, to what other folks are doing. Um, if you saw on that chart there, our staffing levels have remained really steady since twenty eighteen, really only increased about six and a half um FTE since two thousand and eight. Um, just comparatively to some of our neighbors, right? Um, if we look at St. Louis Park in Minnetonka, they're adding staff in, in some of the areas that they have strategic priorities. So in sustainability or equity, um, and inclusion, diversity, things like that. Um, Eden Prairie, Woodbury, Eagan are adding um staff in particular, and police and fire kind of to, to change sort of their models of, of public safety response in, in some of those cities. So um we found through some of our studies that really on average, a lot of our market cities are adding between on average five or six FTE um per year. So just numerically, as we're looking at that, um, this is, you have, you've seen this particular graph before in our financial management plan or this particular table. Um, when we look at what our FTE is for one thousand, sort of comparatively to our, our most, um, our market cities, we're uh in the middle of the pack, right, at about seven. Get that number. And again, this is, this is just one number that sort of doesn't paint a full picture, right? We, we look at those cities, there's all sorts of differences in terms of the community, the size, the, the service levels that they provide. On this in particular, of course, Edina is the only um probably the most comparable, just in terms of the only other city that has full-service EMS. BJ, if I'm correct on that. Yep. Um, so again, helpful background, helpful context to the recommendations that CLA made um for our particular departments and what they would say would bring us to the right place or to the right um complement of staff moving forward. Um, so just to start out with, just to give you quick, quick snapshot upfront. Um, you'll see here they recommending fifty-six um FTE to be added over a period of four or five years. We'll show you that, kind of get to the, like, how that would be distributed through the years. Um, towards the end, I'll come back to this, so you can see kind of how that's feathered in um in their recommendation. Um, one thing I think that's just important as we're going through this to know is that they did, um, sort of triage, they did sort of recommend the um, the order in which these were important to fill, and so certainly police and fire were um at the top, police being sort of their most urgent need. Um, and so as we go through, you'll kind of see that reflected um in some of the data and some of the recommendations um department by department. So just to start there, just to start with police, um, if we look at their calls for service um over the past, and this is the past eight years, so a little bit tighter of a timeframe even than what we were seeing in the FTE um map that you saw before. Um, what we're seeing here is a, obviously a big increase, a big change in the number of calls that we were generating or traffic um to the cases that are disorderly conduct, mental health, um those kinds of cases that, that require more time de-escalation, follow-up, um to be able to, to provide and get folks the right service um that they need to help um slow down, respond to things, mitigate future calls. Um, so certainly has been a, a burden on, on the police department there. Um, it's, it's reflected in um, right, the overtime that the police department is experiencing. So again, over about that same window, um, our overtime is, is increased nearly fifty percent since two thousand and thirteen. Calls for extra patrol have increased about three to five times since then as well. Um, you'll see kind of, we have that outlier in COVID there, um, where the, the service was a little bit different. Um, but again, um, one of those things where it's helpful for us to be mindful of, of again, how we're taking care of folks and, and what um their well-being means when we look at sort of the extra hours that they're putting in for the community.
Yep, there's a question.
Um, when I look at the overtime here, um, how does that equate to uh what would it cost us to have full-time people here and post the pain overtime? I mean, there's a costing us more or would it be cheaper?
Great question. Great question. Beth, I'm gonna, do you have um any thoughts about what that might equate to or how that might look?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can give you the FTE cost.
That'd be great.
Yep, we'll get that for you.
I think another thing that, a lot of the overtime, there's some that is backfilling positions that are empty. A lot of it too becomes court time, um shift extensions, things that you can't necessarily have a different, another FTE step in and, and take care of that, but it is a great question because it is, um, I was surprised to see even that numbers.
Yeah, certainly when we're investing that year over year, that does, is a great question.
Ma'am, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, generally for financial management planning purposes, you know that a police officer, depending on the step that they're at, we would assume step four, the cost would be approximately a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars per FTE. It doesn't include any additional equipment that they may need. For example, let's say if there's new position, they may need another squad car, just the cost for the person themselves.
So you remember, it's not just the salary, it's everything for that position.
No, no, I, I get that. In transportation, we always had a thing, you got to so much overtime, you hired another person on your dock or to drive because it was cheaper for you to do that than to keep paying all that overtime all the time.
Yeah.
Thank you. Great question. Um, looking to, to the recommendation, you'll see this slide for, a slide just like this for each of the departments as we go through. Uh, in this case, for police, CLA is recommending an additional eleven point five, eleven and a half FTE um to be added over the next five years. Um, very reflective of the fact that police is down ten point five FTE since two thousand and six. Um, so um, as you saw, right, we're, we, the, the calls are, are increasing in complexity and we're here still um down people, some of the things that we've lost in that period of time, um, a traffic unit, street crimes, a school resource officer at the junior high drug task force member. So some of the things that um, that we've lost since we had that, that um higher FTE complement. So um really, at this point, more officers and, and supervisors are urgently needed to help respond to some of um those calls to also help prevent some of, prevent and decrease some of the overtime to really make sure we are taking care um of the well-being of our officers and, and first responders and make sure they're not burned out and sleep deprived as they're really, that, so that they can be their best to respond to our community. Um, and we also could just comment to, right, to have the opportunity to participate in some training that they need and, and some be innovative and, and new initiatives and community engagement and those types of things too. Um, as I mentioned this, you'll see this a little bit later on, but um police again would be considered to be the most urgent of the needs. And, and you'll see that reflected on the um, the timeline report later on. A few more notes as we think about police um that I want to share. Um, we've talked in this group about the COPS grant and, and some of what that would look like or what that means. Um, it, the COPS grant would partially fund um five officers and sergeants for um a five out of the recommended eleven, right? For three years. So um after the three years, the cost becomes the full responsibility of the city. Um, staff are not anticipating that we'd be awarded the grant. Um, and if we are really, our FTE recommendation would remain the same because of the fact that it's up to us to report or to fund the position after the grant is completed.
Yep, Councilmember Keely.
I seem to only remember the grants that we win. Um, do you know what, how many, let's say over the last ten years, so we have a reasonable sample period? How many grants have we uh applied for with cops and uh safer with fire? And how many did we win and how many were we rejected on?
Uh, I think, um, Captain Smith, because I also remember. So how many do you think we, we, we got between um nineteen ninety-six to today?
Oh, no, Mayor.
Softball question? That's not it.
I know when the feds button what, because that was under the Clinton COPS program. And then when they, when they stopped funding it, and so, yeah, go, go.
I know, uh, actually in two thousand and two, we hired three officers through the state.
It was a state grant.
Yeah, and that, that, just like this, after a good year, we had the city, they're gonna pass. And there may have been one other grant of two officers. Does that sound right?
And that was not a federal branch.
So have we won any cops grants from federal government in the last twenty years?
We had five officers in nineteen ninety-eight. I think that came out of uh the COPS grant. That's where we, because we were way back, we were behind, and we had a um uh police master plan that some citizens also took part in it. It was under DuMulan. And uh we needed officers and we were successful in getting five officers uh to jumpstart the deficit that we had, and we had a huge deficit. We have been running in a deficit in police and fire.
Well, how many, back to my question, how many did we get turned down?
I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I know we just recently applied for one. It was at the end of last year, and that one we got turned down, I think, um, one city, we actually got all of the, it was one city in the state, got all of the cops that were, probably grant. I don't know if it's a yearly, yearly thing. The feds tend to offer it. It depends on how their budget goes.
Yeah.
It's, it's a biennium, so every two years you get a new, new budget to, to work with. So if it's like the safer grant, sometimes they offer it, sometimes they don't, and the rules continue to change from my experience on these. Sometimes they're a hundred percent funded for X amount of years, sometimes they change by year, so.
Yeah. And your first run, uh, was it last year for a safer grant and was turned down, and then you resubmit it because we just approved that resubmission?
Yeah, so should we apply for safer back four years ago, five years ago, we, we got the four firefighters on that, and then last year we were turned down.
Yeah.
We have the current application in, but it's uh, just out of context, last year, I think there was three billion dollars in request and there was five hundred million available, so you had a one in six chance, if you want to call it that kind of odds, so. We can check with our records, Mayor, and find out how many times we apply, but I know the answer to how many we've received is zero.
Yeah.
So, your, to your comment, staff isn't overly confident that we're going to get awarded this grant.
Correct.
Mayor, Councilmember Keely, members of the council, I think that it's safe to say that, well, we hope uh that there is a, there's an opportunity for us to offset at least three years of some of these costs. Um, I, I would say that it's not probable, particularly on the cop side of things, and uh we'll get to the safer conversation in the fire uh analysis, but that's where, that's where my mind is at right now.
Yeah. We don't have a high, high level of competence of, we're going to achieve these grants, which helped greatly with the cost in the first three years.
Yeah. Yeah. Mayor Council, good, thank you. Good, good question, yeah. So as I mentioned here, right, we would, staff would really recommend that that is not necessarily be factored in, right, so that we still maintain the same FTE recommendation here. Um, just a note about next steps in, that are specific in particular for police. Um, what you'll see in our recommendation for twenty twenty-three for police, we do um feel is the appropriate recommendation for them for next year. Um, Tanya is planning to partner with a consultant to help um do some, some additional analysis on their staffing uh models, really aligning with community expectations, best practices, um helping to sort of um reduce, you know, civil liability. Um, help focus on operational standards, continue to, to build and protect um their ability to keep the community safe. And so um planning on some additional analysis for them um in future years to sort of help continue this on, help continue to inform um where they go.
Mayor, Councilmembers, uh, I, I've already authorized Tanya uh to begin that work. One of CLA's recommendations here was that um knowing that it's very important us to listen to our community and understand their needs, particularly uh in how we police the community. Um, uh, we're very confident in what we heard from our staff and what CLA did for kind of our year one recommendations with police. We know it's our most urgent need uh through this. Um, and we also know that we need another partner to help us better understand what Bethany just said, our community's needs. Al- also frankly, our, our police department's needs and the people who make up that department in a more meaningful way. So Tanya is already meeting with folks. She uh, she's currently traveling uh to Florida to pick up her son. Uh, sends her regrets, she's not here, but I appreciate that Captain Smith this year uh representing the department. But uh we're beginning that work already, um, and it, that will further inform not only what we've gathered here but help us to make wise out-year budget decisions as we consider, continue to refine this iterative process of understanding complicated and dynamic staff in this area.
Especially when the community has changed quite a bit since the nineties, so we have a very different community than what it was in the nineties and early two thousands. And so I'm glad that uh you've uh approved um a consultant to work and understand what our community needs because we are a different community and then, and what we need to do to ensure its safety.
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you.
Excellent.
That, that will get us a similar result just by comparison to what already has happened in fire with the, the standard of cover that Chief Gentman presented to you. Gosh, I believe that's back, what, last April, about a year ago?
Yeah.
So a similar kind of comprehensive look at the police operation uh to what we have in fire operation.
Yeah, and you're a very comprehensive safer grant application that we all saw. It was yeah, very comprehensive. We're sick too.
Speaking of the fire operation.
Speaking of fire operations, um, Mayor and Council just continuing on um with uh the next sort of prioritized department, of course, in fire. Um, as Greg mentioned, right, there's a standard of cover um document in the fire department that made the work here um a bit easier. Um, as you'll see, of course, in, since two thousand and eleven, um, the number of fire incidents has increased about forty percent. Um, and during that time, only staff has only increased by about ten percent. Um, so given, you know, obviously Burnsville's aging population, about eighty percent of those calls are medical, so that, that trajectory is expected to continue. Um, on, of course, I know when I, when I talk Um on, of course, I know when I when I talk to Chief Gentman too, we always talk about the fact that um sixty percent of our multifamily housing units don't have fire suppression systems, chief, I believe, and um those types of things obviously are are impacting uh your folks as well. Uh similar to to police, um uh we spend about five hundred thousand dollars in overtime to ensure that the twenty-four seven fire and EMS uh protection for the city as well. Um so another um thing as we think about um our our staff's well being um and their ability to sort of uh maintain their minimum staffing levels requires mandatory overtime, which is also leading to burnout um in our fire department um as a result of of that need. Um the other thing is, of course, um as that demand for service increases, um we are having to more frequently rely on our mutual aid partners. Um this recommendation of of sixteen FTE in the fire department is reflective of the standards of cover document um that BJ shared with you last year. Um like like we talked about similar conversation on safer grant, um the safer grant would fund six uh of sixteen FTE for three years. Um and again, here staff does not expect to be awarded the grant. So uh similarly uh would be recommend that that the FTE um uh recommendation remain the same, um since it would be up to us to find those positions. All right, moving to uh moving to some of our our other departments. Um one thing um that you'll see as we move into human resources is that um in order to accomplish hiring or onboarding or training, um any of the folks that we just talked about in police and fire, um we would need some help in human resources to to be able to do that. Um probably the first person we would need to add would be someone in HR to post all those jobs and review applications and interview um folks. So um you'll see in human resources of here, uh of course, are as a as a department um are is down three FTE from two thousand and six. Um so just uh making it a a little more challenging for folks to be able to um support, you know, our managers, provide great service to employees. Um you know, help teams with recruiting and benefits and workers' compensation and employee engagement and labor relations. Um so um you'll see sort of as we go through our next few departments that, of course, sort of the corresponding need um as we increase other departments would be to increase um our internal services, our H R I T communications to be able to help take care of um the needs that those those greater number of FTE would 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 create. Um so in here and in human resources, um CLA is recommending um an additional three FTE um in HR.
Mayor Council, Bethany Bethany made the point partially and just partially not that uh in police and fire alone, you're looking at the addition of twenty FTEs. It's not only the front end uh implications of um of staffing the organization or rightsizing the organization. Um the three three main buckets of of FTEs that are proposed through the CLA recommendation, you saw at the beginning of the slide and you'll see as we kind of work the feather that's in our all organized staff. Uh that adds an increased burden uh to to our HR folks. Uh so uh just making sure that we can uh that we can appropriately support those operations on the administrative side is something that CLA highlighted in their recommendations. And I think is an important kind of pin to uh to put in this conversation that um well, it's always our goal to be efficient and effective. Uh there is a real need to consider how how do we best support uh the operations, particularly if we add substantive amounts of FTEs uh to those groups.
You have to onboard them if we're going to have the kind of organization that we want efficient uh and effective uh organization. So you need the people to onboard people.
Yeah, and the the ongoing process again of continuing to to build and maintain organizational health and culture. Uh these FTEs are reflective of the people uh besides myself, who are really responsible for making that work happen. So it's an incredibly important part of the conversation. Uh certainly one not to be lost as we look at some of the other larger departments and FTE needs. Uh kind of an important, but important point from what we learned through this study and what we know about our organization. Your point.
Absolutely. Um so similar to HR, right, in in IT, um our number of help desk tickets has been increasing steadily, um up forty percent um since two thousand and seventeen. Um and that's expected to continue um to rise. Um the the number of, I think, mobile mobile and other devices that the IT folk supports just continues to to increase as well as as city needs evolve and we're looking towards the future and making sure we're well positioned. Um you know, so it's challenging for staff to keep up sort of with those technology advances themselves, train city staff on on the new devices, um sort of in then that balance of their daily work with uh keeping us keeping us on on track, right, and well well informed. So um the recommendation in IT um is for for um new FTE to help help support those processes um in systems. And next you'll see communications and community engagement. Um so like I I think I said earlier, right, the the need, the sort of immediate, the need for immediate accurate communication um is ever increasing. So our requests for assistance in in particular in the communications department, but um all through through the department are are increasing um as we continue to place emphasis on on being responsive, being engagement, engaging to the community. Um of course, we've added the community engagement sort of function to that group, which I think is so important in helping us build relationships, make sure we're sharing the right information to the right people. Um being important to write our vision of of being a vibrant staple, the leading welcoming to all. Staff in communications are consistently working nights and weekends and and just feeling like there's little time to sort of um again, be innovative, train, be um strategically planned. So um there's a recommendation for three and a half uh FTE throughout the communications and community engagement work group. Um next you'll see finance. So um finance is down um for FTE from two thousand and six as well. So again, just making it difficult for each person in finance to be able to provide that individualized support to managers, um in particular a budget needs. They they report having difficulty being able to have take time to cross train, so are are sometimes not able to take time off for things like that because they're the only person in finance that might be able to to perform a particular task. Um uh obviously, they're they're having trouble, again, difficulty just meeting the demands um of of their sort of day to day um utility process, you know, check processing, utility billing accounts, those things throughout the audit process in the budget season. So the recommendation here is for three FTE in finance. Moving on a little bit, so changing gears a little bit to public works. In public works, there's um you'll see a recommendation of seven full-time FTE um in the public works department. Um there's just a lot of um activities um that I end up having to be reactive rather than proactive. Increasing sort of that that risk, right, as they as there are those things are being performed, the number of projects, the complexity of projects, in particular in the CIP, um in particular with utilities and parks. Uh folks are struggling in in public public works to keep up on those demands. Uh one example, you know, is in water. We talk, we talk about water um periodically here. Burnsville just statistically is generating the most drinking water per utility employee um by a wide margin and some of our neighbors. Um so again, just something to be aware of as we think about um those seven FTE recommendation in public works. In public works, there's an ability to be a little bit more creative with how those are funded. So um some of those would potentially be enterprise funds. And so um there's the some more creativity there that that can happen with um the funding, which is just something for for us as we're we're refining the the um recommendations through the budget process. Um we have the city manager and city clerk's office. Um so in in elections, um the early person voting um and absentee voting have increased substantially, um especially since two thousand and sixteen, so from ten percent to twenty-three percent. Um a trend that we expect to continue. Um so support in the um in the elections area um as well as the city manager currently um without dedicated executive assistants or sort of some leadership in in that office and his office. Um so the recommendation here would be um for four new FTE between the city manager and city clerk's offices.
One note on that, Mayor Council, uh vast majority of these FTEs are related to the clerk's office function, particularly in elections. I would also be remiss not to remind you uh as an important point uh that in this year's budget, we did add an FTE that is uh temporarily funded by fund balance. It is a position that we do have an incumbent in now. Um so that will be a that will be a position that will be important as part of my recommendation back to you for the twenty twenty-three budget. Um uh reflective of that first point that Bethany made, that we're seeing a significant change coming out of COVID in election behavior. Um uh voting behavior and and kind of the importance of supporting that operation in a more what I would call a more sustainable way uh with Michelle and and her folks.
Well, as you know, last year when we well, two years, we've been asking for help in the city clerk's area. And when I was told that it was only for one year, I said, are you kidding me? Who's going to um apply for a job for only one year? But thank God, Michelle had knew someone lives in Burnsville, who is a deputy city clerk who is willing to take that risk, but it is something that we do need. Because the city clerk's office is not just elections, there's licensing and you keep all of the archives of all of the information. And then uh everything else, if people don't understand the work that's being done at the city clerk's office, it's huge. It's and and uh people don't really understand. I think Michelle talks to um Joel more often about all the things that need to be codified and also legal. And when you get data request, the time that goes into all of that. So yes, I understand and you need to make sure that that position is secure.
And we're seeing great results out of that. Uh and other changes on the clerk's office. I I think the uh the code review task force in the work and code review alone is a uh is a good representation of the type of work that we've been able to do thinking differently about how we structure that area.
So let me just our last two departments and I um will will continue to get get you through here. So I try to keep in my time, but um um community development, um building inspections have gone up nearly fifty percent since two thousand and thirteen. Um and just our our inspections, folks, as we've talked about, I think in this group in the past are um definitely feeling over overburdened. Um permits and rental licenses have increased fifteen percent since two thousand and thirteen. I mean, just staff are unable to sort of pursue professional development opportunities and improve sort of the workflow um within the department. Um there's a recommendation for for FTE and community development. Um and last but not least, our recreation facilities department, where there is now a recommended increase in FTE. Um but but Garrett shared, you know, that we have the staff they need um to to meet counseling community expectations. Um they're they're stressed right now in terms of their spending time on parks projects rather than recreation programming. Um and just um the the improvement in in facilities tends to help um with their ability to to keep up with facilities. Um the newer, the older facilities are harder to keep up with.
Garrett, this is you're only talking about your full time. You're seasonal. You're you're really deficit. You're really below when you're seasonal hiring already, are you?
Madam Mayor, yes, I I think both in the parks area and in the recreation area, we're struggling to find seasonal staff to accomplish the programs and and the maintenance of the parks that we're looking for. Um but if we are fully staffed or our full-time people are doing the things that we need them to do, yes.
So you have you just need to make sure that you have seasonal workers.
All right. Um just the last last few few um comments here, we have just to show you again how um the 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 FTE recommendations are feathered out through the next four years. Um sorry, it might be a little the contrast might be a little hard for you to see on there. It's it's seventeen um total FTE in two thousand and three. You can see that eight of those again are police, um again, based on that that sort of urgent need to get them um back up to the the level they need to be to serve the community. Um they're again feathered through here um to 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 make a reasonable impact on the budget. We know that um you know, this is really just a starting point, like Greg said at the beginning, um to kind of get us to the place where we can inform those service conversations. Um this gives us sort of a roadmap, right, for what the ideal might look like, but we're realistic that this is going to need to change to come within um those guardrails that we've talked about in this group um for the budget. Um and so this again is a milestone, really, um along those conversations and continues to to inform um that as we go. Um just to give you quick, um again, uh something you saw in the financial management plan presentation. Um but similarly, if we were to add all seventeen of those FTEs um and and if no other market city added FTE, it would bump us again just up to number six in terms of total FTE per one thousand. Um again, we're we're seeing relatively consistently that our our market cities are adding in the neighborhood of five or six FTEs um on average in a year. So um given that we've only added six since two thousand and eight, right, you can see where um we're a little bit behind. Um and this would really be catching us up um some of our neighbors. Um in terms of budget dollars, um the addition of fifty-six FTE um in in all of the sort of associated other costs um would be about five point five three million dollars um from the general fund. Um about eight million dollars overall. Um just, you know, of note, right, the the majority of that um coming from the police and fire additions, about three point three million dollars of the of the general fund coming from police and fire. Um this also, you know, finance, of course, helps us with factoring in all of the other costs that might come from the addition of FTEs and um vehicle and equipment fund for police and fire. They're make up about one point one million dollars of that other fund you see there in the one point three. Um so um just just the some interesting observations in um how the dollar.
So maybe I have a question. So uh fire, it's zero out of water and sewer funds and thirty-three thousand. Um tell me how.
Yes.
That is.
Mister. May I?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the breakdowns uh by fund are based on the historical budget allocations for FTEs. So what is currently being applied in the organization today, we simply carried those assumptions forward as a part of the analysis.
Okay.
So it is possible at some point in time in the future that those fund allocations could be modified uh depending on what precisely those individual FTEs are doing.
Yeah, because I can see public works because a lot of the the work of board, water and sewer. Uh big amount of that comes out of uh the work that public works does. So, yeah, okay.
Dan particularly, but no one will like when a city manager makes a guess at something, but I would venture a guess that that thirty-three thousand dollars in police is related to some sort of administrative position that was assumed in the analysis in the police department would be my guess. But I'm guessing and Dan's making it look. Let's give him give him fancy spreadsheet. Everything's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't seen that stuff in years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it it's okay. Because I know that we, you know, our water and sewer funds, because, you know, they're there. And so when when you start to look at how these are funded for the general fund and the water and sewer fund. Because I always look at the water and sewer fund because it, you know, we're always doing a lot of work. Hey, we're doing some work down at uh hundred and twenty-fifth and first.
Yep.
Yeah, there was a big uh something must have been wrong with some underground stuff. But anyway, my my guess it had to do with water and sewer.
It most likely did.
We can certainly get back to you on that allocation question, Madam. A a more important point uh here would be that this is a starting. Yeah, this is Bethany's going to go to a slide that shows this is different. You all know that the fifty-six is more uh FTEs than we had assumed in our best guess.
Yeah.
Uh in the financial management plan. Uh so this very much is a starting point, kind of going back to to my uh to my introductory comments. Uh there's still work to do here. This is an iterative process. Um I'm very grateful that the teams around the table uh because it's going to take all of our department heads to uh to work within the parameters that uh that we've already discussed and come back to you with um with refined proposals. So um although I always would love to give you final information and be done with something, uh there's still work that needs to be done.
And I like the transparency of all the information that has been shared because a year and a half to two years ago, when I asked for a staffing plan, I knew that it was going to be a difficult nut for us to. And it's a big challenge. But if we don't deal. And it's a big challenge. But if we don't deal with it, it's not going to get better. It's only going to get worse.
For police, the water and sewer allocation is related to. The city manager mentioned an administrative support professional in twenty twenty four. There's programmed a wellness and peer support coordinator. That position would be detailed to the police department, but in our financial analysis, we assume that much of their work could also be applied to other departments. For their own wellness and peer support as well. So some of the costs were allocated to water and sewer.
You know, I was thinking, you know, fire uses a lot of water. Why have we not? We should, we should allocate some of those funds to to fire as well, I mean. To put out a fire, they need water.
Do we charge them a T for all that water?
I'm fighting for you here, BJ.
Ryan's getting ready to fight back.
You remember Bud?
I know he would be saying, what are you?
Mayor Council, so as mayor, as you said, right, this is for transparency purposes, this is the change that. That this the CLA recommendation makes from the financial management plan that you were presented earlier this year. You can see sort of seven and a half FTEs about, you know, nine hundred and seventy nine thousand from the general fund, about one point six million dollars total. That's the comparison right to the the what we presented you before. As Greg said, we know that this is just a point along and a milestone along the journey. We have more work to do. We know that we are are looking towards those next steps really of being able to have service conversations. With you, right, service conversations with councils to give us that department by department context that we need to understand. What your expectations, what are expectations and demands are across the community. So that's our plan in the very near future to provide a framework to our department heads to be able to efficiently get back in front of you and give you the context you need. Well, before you have to vote for a budget. We remember our guardrails. We remember that we talked at their last budget meeting about. Sort of coming in with that working assumption of the property tax increase between five point seven and ten percent. We are planning some one on one conversations with department heads and the city managers to help further refine. The the information we receive from CLA coming down within those guardrails and and really right now, we just asked. For that we can continue working through the development of the proposed twenty twenty three budget within those parameters. Again, this this, we're excited to share this information with you so that we can kind of help inform that. And and think about how we come within, come back to you with. The next step, the next iteration of this information.
Thank you, Bethany. Thank you, Greg. Members of the council staff is asking that they continue the work now that we have this information. And allow them to do the work that needs to be done, we'll get better. Look at the budget as we go forward, but now we know what we need in terms of staffing.
Took two years to to get, but we finally got here.
Yeah. We put him in charge and he did the.
Few months.
And and now and now we understand what's been going on. I mean, so members of the council. I'd like all of your support to allow staff to move forward and to continue this work. So that we can staff our organization. Correctly to serve the people of Burnsville. It's a very different city. When I was elected, Burnsville was only eight percent minority. When you talk to Dr. Battle now, she will, she said to me, Mayor, ISD one ninety one is now minority, majority. We're different.
Two thousand and six before smartphones. I work in a service industry and the expectations for things to happen now have changed substantially. I can only imagine people think in city government, you can just pull a rabbit out of a hat and do something, but you know. Nobody knows how the sausage is made in closed doors.
Councilmember Workman, that's a that's a great point. As a matter of fact, I have a pretty high expectation of of staff when it comes to creating great experiences. And we talk a lot about our service being a combination of responsiveness and responsibility. The five of you are very well aware of what responsiveness might feel like, certainly when things don't go well. But to to continue down that path, there there certainly there certainly is a change. I actually think that it's a it's a good analogy. That that in the time period that we're looking at, the the smartphone was yet to be introduced. Between between that time and now and. Yeah, it's a it's an interesting dynamic in terms of the the pressures that that. Service expectation, service demands and and levels will create for us.
And what that instrument does in communicating false information. Or correct information and. We, the members of the city council, have in the last two weeks seen. What our police department has gone through and our fire department and the immediacy. Of the information that we receive and the work that they need to do and how they have to execute that. So, yeah, that's a good point.
Yes, I have a question for Dan. I see the range between five, seven and ten. Would five, seven allow us to hire any new hires?
And mayor members of the council. Assuming that the budget were to remain the same as far as its current allocations and likelihood. No, the five point seven percent would not allow you to hire additional staff.
Thank you.
That would preclude, of course, doing some sort of reallocation. But if everything remained the same, like we know.
Well, I, to answer your question, I do agree with supporting. Staff to take the next step. I think doing the study was the first step in this process. So we had a good handle on where the deficiencies are. And I appreciate city manager Lindbergh's next step to meet with the departments and and really work through. What the consultants presented and and mesh that with the department heads and department supervisors and. And what is where the priorities are, I guess. Obviously. For us, we each have our own priorities or perspective of priorities. And I and I think we always are very support, all of us are very supportive of our police and fire. For many reasons, I just was on a, I picked up on a. An article that was written by the US Department of Justice in twenty nineteen. It's a community oriented policing services or cops article. And it read. Law enforcement continues to be challenged to solve problems well beyond the traditional still for the field. At the same time, public scrutiny has increased and with it, the pressure from local and national stakeholders to solve societal problems quickly and well. And it talks about the eight critical areas, community policing at the forefront. Deescalation, crisis intervention, the role of first line supervisors, early intervention systems, internal affairs, recruiting, hiring and retention. And the use of data. So all of that really comes down to that that opening statement. One could say that that was made in the last year, but that was actually in twenty nineteen before things radically changed in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. And for fire, we've been presented some data. Last few years and the. The service calls, the incredible growth in service calls for paramedic. And I believe BJ, you had mentioned it's going to top eight thousand possibly in twenty twenty two. It's, I I feel in a way, looking back, being responsible for decisions on this council are part of the decision. I carry one fifth of responsibility at least. I feel like we've we've done a disservice to supporting what the data was telling us years ago. And it's now unfortunately put us in a position where. There's a need for sixteen more. Paramedic firefighters and we've sort of, you know, maybe intentionally or unintentionally. Kick the can down the road and we're faced with a very, very significant need. But for me, if both police and fire comes down to where does public safety fall in priorities for me and. I have believed since I ran for council back in two thousand and six that it is the men and women in blue that are the basis for our safety. And the work that they do. I said, blue and red, maybe I should say blue and red, even though the paramedics are in blue. And that's truly the foundation of all other things, right? You can't really have economic prosperity without a safe city. Families can't walk freely outside and play in parks if they don't feel safe. Businesses aren't going to open and employ people if they don't feel the city is safe. And when a city gets a bad reputation or crime that is out of control, like quite frankly, they sell their home or they move out of the apartment, they go where it is safe. And we've seen evidence of that here in Minnesota. So I just, the bottom line is there's no shortcut to a safe city. There's no shortcut to hiring robo cops to replace human beings. It requires human beings. It requires more tools today and more training and more areas of specialty with our mental health. Our behavioral health unit, sorry. And for fire, going through fire one oh one a couple Saturdays ago. It was a a real eye opening experience to the physical demands, I would say, that I that my back can't handle anyone. To to do what they do. And, you know, I think the data really just demands. The attention go into public safety and that's certainly where I believe that's where my priority is going to be throughout this budget process. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Move ahead.
Yeah, I think move ahead. One thing I would throw out there, and this has nothing to do with. Whether we hire more people or don't hire more people, but and and this is not just for our city by any means. We are really focused on staunching the bleeding on the back end of what's happening. And that's what's straining our police and fire. And what what we are not doing, we need to start figuring out how to do this. Is we need to start doing far more preventative and changes in our culture. So that we are not getting this on the back end. We are. Preventing it from happening on the front end and that. A lot of this is coming down to mental health issue, you know, other things like that. So as we're looking at budgeting and it's again, not just our city, not just our state. This is endemic throughout. We need to start placing a higher focus on these early preventative. Measures and getting involved in it. Or we are going to be chasing our tails on this back end and it is going to spiral worse and worse and worse. And that is the trajectory and we can no longer ignore it. So when we talk about kicking the can down the road and I absolutely one hundred percent. Agree and I'm not disagreeing with that, but the biggest can that we are all collectively as a culture kicking down. Down the road is all of these preventative issues. And they're not fun and they're not sexy and you don't see results right away and you can't point to something and say I hired four more cops or something like that. And that makes them pretty unpopular, but we need to start buckling down and getting more serious on that. And I am. I am very welcome to to working with. Our other cities here, working with Dakota County, working with other state agency, whatever private organizations. But this really needs to start being a focus.
One of the things, the factors that we need to also put in place to really understand the decisions we make. Is the impact of multi housing, whether it's senior housing, because if you're reaching eight thousand calls. And eighty percent of all of that is medical. How much I want to know how much of that is out of all of those. Facilities, senior facilities. So when we make a decision about any of those developments. There is an impact on personnel and there is a dollar impact in service. And I keep talking about that, but nobody seems to hear me. So I'm saying it now. When you do Regina have a. A a development coming in, I would like to have fire. As part of that decision making, because when you do that, what is the impact from fire? And from police.
Fire is at the table at our development review committee meeting. So they they do have a presence. They do.
Yeah, but the thing is, are you paying attention to the number of people that you now have to? Have you now have some data, you have eight thousand calls, eighty percent of your calls are medical. Eighty percent is what we're we continue to hear. So we have to understand that. And the same thing that goes for police. Every time we put a product in the city, what's the service cost that's going to come up? You know, we're 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 a city that's built out. Already. So we are in redevelopment and and the cost of running a city. The size, it's not going to go down. It's only going to continue to go up. And the challenges are in in public safety and police empire, but it impacts all of the other. Departments, impacts all of the departments, impacts public works, impacts our parks and recreation. It impacts. I mean, in the last two weeks. I looked at those things and the time that there are that there was messages need to go up. Carissa, you have been. On top of all of those things to make sure that we have those social media communications pieces out between you and police. That's a lot of communication and then you have to write it and then you have to post it on all of the social channels. I see that. And I want you to know that I notice all of that. And I know, I also know. Captain Smith, Matt, you have been doing social media before. Carissa got into it because I know who was doing it in police ahead of all of that, and that was you. And when you were a sergeant at that time, right?
I had done some social media. I had some help. Yeah, I'm not exactly a social media guy.
No, but before Carissa jumped in to help you, you were doing that. I was seeing all of that work that you were trying to put out there. Now you have, now we have a department that can help both police and fire with all of that. And I see the time, you know, when it's at two AM in the morning, Carissa, that you're putting out a statement. Which means Matt is also up at that time and the chiefs. And I know that BJ and Tanya, because when I see texts come in, reporting all of these. At two AM, three AM, you know. That has a direct impact on your health. Work life balance.
Mary, to your point, absolutely. Our our efforts are collaborative. Chief Chief Shorts and I were meeting just last week with. Some folks talking about about future staffing needs and the reality is our our PD will never necessarily be big enough, nor should it. To have their own social media or public information type functions, we do it together, right? And and Matt and Carissa are very good examples of that. Back to Councilmember Schultz's point. Absolutely. I couldn't agree more that we need to be thinking creatively and innovatively. Heck, it's it's our values on the staff side of things. So absolutely, as we look at it. Not only this conversation, but broader budget conversations and priorities across the organization, that's that's a very well heard and received. Mayor, to to your point, and I have it down here, I'll work with Chief Johnson, Chief Shorts to to see how granular we can get. About call data and impacts on development so that that request is noted and we'll follow up on that as well.
Because that gets to Kara's. Point about, you know, we need to understand what it is that we're doing that's causing. some of these issues that we need to.
See what we can do with the information that we have available.
Dan G?
I have to disagree with you a bit on this. I think multi housing has really helped us over the years as we've gone through this. It provides, can I please? It provides housing for our seniors that are downsizing. They see our police department and our fire department at many senior single family homes in my neighborhood all the time. So it's just because they're in one area, I don't think it creates a great deal more issue for us. The bottom line is, as a city and as an organization, we're a service organization. These are the things we provide as our city grows. And then we kind of shift with things as our population changes. That's, that's what we do. And if we want to continue to keep the people here that have built this city and attract new people, that multi housing is going to be very important to our future. You look at the housing prices today. It's, it's where it's at right now.
I'm not saying that we don't continue, but I want to understand what it will mean in, in, in service cost and staffing cost.
I just don't want to characterize them as a drag in our community, because I don't think they are a drag in our community.
But they, but there is a cost.
Sure.
And that's what I'm addressing.
That's what we're here to address the cost.
It's the cost.
Same with sewer pipes.
Yeah.
Ryan and I have made discussions about we have to put bigger sewers in somewhere because we put in too many apartments.
So all of those things, as we continue to look at product that we bring in, we have to understand that fact. I'm not saying that we don't need, yes, we, we will have people who will come and say they want to develop. But the thing is, we need to understand the cost of service. And what that cost would mean in terms of FTEs. So, no, I'm not saying that it, it's not a value to our community, it is. Okay, so thank you so much. And Greg and staff, everybody has said move forward and thank you for the information and you still have work to do. Okay, those members of our leadership team who don't have to stay for the other items, you may be excused, but there are some of you who need to stay for the other items. So please continue to, to bear with us as we move down the line here. So thank you.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I, I just want to, I want to specifically recognize Bethany in a, in a transition where our HR director went out on some very important leave. She took this presentation and information and really brought it to life organizationally. And I very much appreciate that. It was a collaborative effort with the folks around the table. So thank you all for being here and thanks to Bethany for the work that went into this. Very important organization.
Thank you, Bethany. And I do see that you're, you're very much present in a lot of the meetings, which gives you good insight and knowledge base to speak on all of these things since you are doing organizational work. So thank you for all of that. And to everybody else, stay safe out there, you guys, you know? I, I don't know how else to say it, except I pray for you. It's difficult. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Into everybody, thank you. Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. The next item is the use of legacy fund for grant options. And presenting is Regina Dean, the Assistant Community Development Director. And she is going to be giving us a couple, oh no, just one sketch plan because the other one withdrew.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Mayor, members of the council, I do have Chris Stoka with MWF here.
Say the name again.
Chris Stoka. With MWF, he is available to help answer any questions if they come up. Certainly, if you're able to invite him up to the table, I'd encourage.
To the table, Chris, where there is a microphone.
So we did learn late Friday that the other application that we received, they did withdraw their request after doing additional financial calculations. They found out that they're about ten million dollars. I'm sure they have a ten million dollar gap that just could not be recovered at this time to move their project forward. So they have withdrawn, but we do have MWF that is still very interested in the funding. So just a little bit of background, we do have one point one million dollars of environmental legacy fund grant money from Dakota County. There was a pilot program back in twenty eighteen where we were allotted, I believe it was one point one five million. We did use that money towards an industrial development that's under construction right now in our Minnesota River quadrant. And then we have this round two pilot money that's still available. It's set to expire in November of twenty twenty two. Through our agreement with Dakota County, we do have the ability to request an extension if needed. Don't know if that would be granted, but we have the ability to make that request. The, the money can be used towards land acquisition, environmental cleanup and demolition. Those are the types of uses that we can use those funds for. And, and this is a unique grant funding source. It's competitive only in the sense that there may be other developers interested in the, in this money. We are one of a handful of other recipients. There are a couple other cities that did receive funding in the past. And it's because we have a landfill within the city. That was one of the criteria that Dakota County had, had made to, to be able to allocate this money, this funding source. Since twenty eighteen, we've had over a hundred thirty individual conversations with developers, property owners, different businesses, and to try to encourage them to redevelop their property or develop their property. We also brought this information to various trade shows like Mincar, MSA. These are commercial real estate type of events as well as printed and web media as well. We, and then we did have the two recent applications from MWF and Episcopal Homes and which the Episcopal Homes withdrew. So with that, there is a background memo in your packet from Lers. We use them, they're a financial consultant to evaluate the applications and to provide a recommendation on if the projects did have a need and if they met our, our economic development tools policy as well as our economic development strategic plan. And then they reviewed their performance and additional data to, to make a recommendation. So MWF is interested in what we reference as the US bank site in heart of the city. It's off of Burnsville Parkway. It's been vacant for at least a year now. They've consolidated and it has been for sale. There was a purchase agreement at one point on it. That developer withdrew and MWF currently has a contract for the property. The site itself was, the, or the building was built in nineteen seventy five. Its office, former branch, probably functionally obsolete. And they are, they are willing to sell the property and the site, its own transit oriented development, and it is guided. So the plan would be to demo the building, construct approximately a hundred and sixty two apartment units. It would be four story and market rate. That's just the general layout, very conceptual at this point. Just to know, MWF is currently constructing two buildings just north of Burnsville Parkway and the former Cross Anderson land. So they're invested in the community and have a very strong interest in, in additional development. And then this is included in your packet, I apologize. I neglected to attach it within your backgrounds that went on on Friday. But there is a printed version before you and copies are available for the public as well. This is just an example of their Concord development that is under construction right now. It just looks like a kind of dirt being graded right now. So it's not actually out of the ground yet, but that's what this will look like. And then just some example elevations from other projects. An example amenities. Indoor and outdoor. So I just wanted to provide you with a snapshot of the current taxes on, on the property, the current value. So currently, the value of the building and land is approximately one point six billion dollars. With this project, I believe it would be approximately twenty nine million dollars, almost thirty million dollars. And the amount that the, the tax capacity would be three hundred and sixty two, almost three hundred and sixty three thousand dollars versus today, which is with assessments fifty one thousand dollars. So a significant increase in, in tax value with the project. This is just a breakdown of how the different sources use to finance the project, including the elf fund. This is included in more detail in your packet. And just a summary of the evaluation from Lers, which did indicate that there is a need and wanted to identify that, yes, this is within our economic development strategic plan, priority area, part of the city. We do anticipate a higher tax value or inclusive tax base. And one thing to note, because it's so conceptual at this point, we don't have those detailed plans. We were unable to evaluate if the proposal would meet, but would qualify as better or best architectural standards. So as part of our policy for economic development, use of economic development tools, we have said it needs to be kind of a, of a higher, of a higher value for your architectural materials or what you're bringing to the project, things like higher amenities, indoor, outdoor, higher place making amenities within your project. Something that, that kind of is a value added for us providing additional, additional financing tools. So that's something that would be yet to be determined, but would be an expectation. Should you be supportive of allocating the grant funding to MWF? So with that, because we only have one project at this time and based off of the analysis from Lers, there is a need and one point one million dollars would be reasonable to allocate to the project. The project may not go forward without the use of these funds. We are, we are coming to you, council, to see if there's support and moving forward. And if there are any other issues or concerns that you may have. And again, Chris Stoka is here to help fill in any gaps and help answer any questions that you may have.
Members of the council, yeah.
The buildings along the parkway, they are a lot designated for elf funds in our initial look at different areas of the city.
We have put together as a staff, different scenarios of projects that we, we believe would be, I would say, high contenders for use of elf funds. A couple of projects within heart of the city, a project on Difley Road and thirteen, a project on County Road forty two, the Cub Food Site. We've, again, we've had a lot of conversations with a lot of people. And, and to this, to date, we haven't had that kind of that next step of, of moving forward.
Okay. Question. We, you don't, we don't have to go into the depths of why commercial is struggling as a whole right now. But I think the goal for this area has been a mix of residential and commercial. Is this not a good fit to integrate some commercial? I know you guys aren't commercial developers per se. But I know that when this plan was created, that was kind of part of the vision was to integrate residential with, you know, front, my front row, commercial retail.
Yeah. It's an excellent question. And as you indicated, it's not really what we do. We could certainly look at it, but generally speaking, I know it's been challenging for some time to integrate commercial with multifamily residential. Unless you're in a very certain, you know, conducive location. I, I can, I can certainly look into it. You know, if we were obligated to work, you know, it would make sense from a financial perspective, but it's, it's pretty risky. So I'd say it's low probability.
It wasn't a very specific question that I asked you, but I appreciate your reply.
I did my best.
Kind of talking and gratitudes.
No, it's, it's a, it's a good question, actually.
Thanks. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Dan K?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm curious why this particular property requires any subsidy. It's in a premium area, there's really no, other than the demolition of the existing building, which there's, there's a cost there. But why is this one requesting public funds to get done with all the other projects that have come through here? Many of them have not requested it. Is it just the demolition cost that's really the trigger?
That's a good question and I can speak from firsthand experience because we just broke ground on a couple that didn't require any assistance, which we're proud of. Those, that was a greenfield site, so no redevelopment of the existing commercial building. And because it's a commercial building, it's just, it's more expensive. It's difficult to come to an agreement between buyer and seller when the seller has a, you know, a commercial property on, onsite. But at the same time, getting another user in a tired old building is also difficult. And, and it is a better, slightly better location than our other project. So that is just one, one of the main reasons. And then, you know, we were really fortunate, quite honestly, that we closed on our financing when we did on the other project, because the last, I mean, if it had been another two months, I might be unfortunately coming to you here for the other project just because the markets shifted so much, so with interest rates and construction costs. So those two reasons, just the change in the markets, the last four months and the, the higher price property are, are the reasons that we're here for this project.
Do you know what the specific costs are for demolition of this building?
I was in the application, I, I want to say it was a hundred and fifty thousand.
Sorry, what was that?
One hundred and fifty thousand.
Did you say a million dollars?
Well, I'm looking at the sources and it, the elf grant, you're asking for a million.
But that's not.
And, and the uses.
Deconstruction cost, so the, the demolition.
The demolition cost.
Yeah, the demolition was just a fraction of the, the ELF. A lot of it was to tell, I guess, make the, the property more priced more in line with what we can, what we can pay.
Is the.
And, and I would like to say, you know, we didn't indicate to the seller that we were pursuing this grant. So there wasn't any inflation with that, just to be upfront, we didn't.
Is, is the recommendation by our consultant, which would reduce the one million to, I'm sorry, what was the number?
So originally, originally, Lers had proposed to allocate eight hundred thousand dollars to MWF and.
Episcopal. But now when the Episcopal home is gone.
They found value in, they found value in both the projects. And of course, the other project was tax exempt. It's a church currently, so there was value in that as well. And then this project, it's within a priority area and there's definitely benefits to both. And both did have a need with this project, knowing that they withdrew the, the request Episcopal. We threw the request, I did reach out to Lers to see would allocating the, the full one point one million dollars be unreasonable? Would it still, would, do they still have a need? And the answer was yes.
Then, if I may. This is the last of our elf funds, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, one point.
And we still have some other properties identified as a significant need, thirteen and differently, which needs a cleanup now with the high winds taking over the canopy. And so I guess my question is, can this project go forward on the eight hundred thousand? So we can hold some of the elf for a potential another project that's going to be equally as well, desiring or needing for redevelopment. And, and not just use up all of our available elf, because we don't have any other resources outside of the elf per se, if the Difley and thirteen or another project comes forward. We've basically spent our, our ability to, to offer some, for instance, demolition or something like that, right?
We don't have any. We don't have any, I would say, easy access to additional funds as as Alf is is very flexible. Very user friendly. There are other competitive grants out there that could assist. Dakota County does have their rig grant redevelopment incentive grants deed has grants as well. As well as the Metropolitan Council and this particular property does fall within a. A transit oriented development area. So there's an additional, even an additional funding source that the Metropolitan Council has. Again, very competitive. It's kind of as your conversation before about the grants that. Police have gone after. It's not, it's not guaranteed.
Well, and I I want to clarify, I like the project, love it. I think it's a great redevelopment of that particular site and obviously the. Tax benefit to the city is is pretty significant in our in our. Property tax revenue. So I would love to see the project go forward. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent. Sold on using all of our health on this one project, let's put it that way, but I want to be able to provide some help to make it work.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't vote for the whole lot to go.
Yeah. Well, from my perspective, I wanted to understand. How you're going to be using the money because you have the elf grant under your sources as a million dollars. Get you to your thirty, to the cost of the project was a thirty eight million plus. So how are you going to be using the funds? Because from my perspective also. When I saw what elders had proposed with regard to if there was. Your project and the Episcopal home project, there were, so what did you all think about that? I mean, that was.
So we would use it for the land acquisition and the demolition would be the two uses that we would use the the funds for. And then what was your second question? I apologize.
Were you okay with what was proposed by?
Well, you know, we we want to be good partners with the city and so would be a financial partnership. So we'd be, we'd be grateful for the eight hundred thousand. It's all about, things are changing so much right now that. You know, the the higher the amount, the higher the probability of success, but I think we would definitely be open to looking at it with eight hundred thousand. Perhaps coming back if things change.
Yeah. Okay. Are you in favor of the project going forward and do you want to? But you, would you like to understand the, how much of our? Elf grant money?
I would. I'd like to understand more some of these other funds that are out there to go forward because I know there's other things we can do in the city besides the elf grant. And I don't think that's going to get renewed. I'm not hearing any talk of that at all. I think that's kind of done. And this this project we have till, what, November, you said?
November of twenty twenty.
Project that may come forward between now and then where we actually spend the money by then. A difficult thing.
And I think those are the factors that we have to consider and we have to have staff come back with all of them.
But as far as went forward, yeah, absolutely.
Karen, are you in favor of the project? And then let's take a look at what the elf grant amount is.
Do not object to the project. We do want to know the amount. This would not be my. Favorite use of elf, but. I'm not going to throw up an objection.
Okay. So.
Have a pending time limit.
And that's November of this year, we have to make, or we lose the the elf brand, we lose it. So. And council member Keely, you said, you're in favor of the project. We just need to understand.
I'm in favor of the project and allocating eight hundred.
The eight hundred, okay, yeah, I'd like to. Vince?
Yeah, absolutely. As I'm looking at the big bank building right now, I don't know what else you would put in there if it were to stay. It's a pretty unique use building. So to get rid of it and replace it with a high end. Better, best multifamily would be good. I. So my preference would be to see incorporating some commercial onto that site, just given what the vision was for this area. But I don't want to stand in the way of development either. So I'm good with the project. And if M W F was happy with eight hundred prior to Episcopal, the church pulling out. I I would be fine proceeding. As originally quoted.
And I like the project. You're going to have underground garages, I'm sure.
Yep.
Yeah. And then you'll have some surface parking and I see that you'll have some amenities. But at the same time, you know, if that eight hundred, but the thing is, we need to understand. Even with the remainder of that million, one, one point one million, because we'll lose it in November and I don't want to lose it. So give us some ideas about that, but yeah, in support of the project and if.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one more comment on the commercial space. One compromise will be done to help, because this has been brought up before, as we put a lot of our amenity space along the. Runage, the main streets, and it has the appearance of commercials, so we'll have our fitness area. I still will look into commercial possibilities, but unfortunately, I'm not optimistic.
I mean, you're not, you're running a business and I understand that and you're not going to do something that's going to end up costing you money. It just feels like every time somebody comes in here to develop for the heart of the city, we're kind of fighting for commercial. And I understand the reasons why, you know, like Chase is not a commercial developer either, but.
But he's putting it in.
They put it in and thinking about how many new. Families will be in this area because of all this development. That commercial has got to crack through eventually because there's a lot of heads and beds in this area and I think justifying. Justifying commercial is going to become easier as these buildings come online, but I, but at the same time, I understand that.
Yeah, and Chris, I I too, because the heart of the city is a. Mixed use development. So if you can, take a look and see what you can do because there's a lot of different uses. That can benefit that whole area and also your, your. Your renters. So, so take a look at it, but. Regina, what you're hearing is that and Chris, that we all support the project. And. Eight hundred thousand is where we're looking at. But the other is that I don't want to lose the remainder if we don't have another project. By November.
Sounds good. The next step procedurally would be to bring this to council. At your regular meeting for a formal either resolution or motion for support. And then the county also has to, the C D A, excuse me, needs to approve the request as well. So. Steps that we need to complete as well.
Yeah, because you'll have to bring it before the C D A to to approve the allocation. And then the council will ratify it. Do you need any?
I just want to again, thank you and and N W F to invest in Burnsville. You've got two. Fairly significant or maybe one large project that's going on on the north side of Burnsville Parkway. And glad that you stepped in after the other applicant pulled out interest in acquiring this building and showed continued interest to invest in Burnsville.
It's, yeah, we're really excited to be a part of your community. It has a lot to offer, including my in-laws, so I'm here a lot.
Yeah, and.
It's exciting.
Just a quick question. What's market rate today? What are the ranges for a one, two and a three bedroom? And then what is the makeup of your proposed building as far as one, two and three? I don't know if I extracted that out of the.
That's a good question. It's around two dollars a square foot, so fourteen fifteen hundred for one bedroom. We have efficiencies, one bedrooms and twos. I can't remember the exact, but. Mostly, I'd say eighty percent efficiencies in one bedrooms, the younger, young, young urban professional.
Sure.
Market is what we're targeting, so they're very popular right now, so.
Very.
A bar would be great on the first level.
Workout and then go.
Across the street carbonies, but. Okay, all right. Thank you so much. Thank you. And that you continue to work with us and. Yeah, and thank you for choosing Burnsville to be. The second home for your second project. Thank you. We're going to take a seven minute break and then we'll reconvene. Okay. Okay, we are now reconvened and. The next item is the update to the city's policy five point zero one five, and this is the streetscape. Operations and maintenance assessment discussion that it was continued from previous work sessions. And presenting this evening is our public works director, Ryan Peterson, but also. Present virtually is our city engineer, Jen Desert, who has done a lot of the. Work on this particular item. Am I correct, Ryan?
Your correction deserves all the credit when this goes really well. So first of all, I just want to say, I feel kind of like I'm in a panel, like I'm getting this interview, I got you all back there and there's no one around. And I'm not complaining about it, just it just gave me the feeling, but luckily I have our city engineer Jen on. Online to help support us through this, so.
Especially Lutheran church.
Everybody's in the backseat.
Yeah, we want to be in the back, that's for sure.
I sit in the back.
So without further ado, we'll turn it over to Jen, as she has definitely a manager's process and I am excellent at doing slides. So Jen, without further ado, do it to your, your shoulder.
Yeah, welcome and thank you for doing all of the work.
She's not here because she has a COVID exposure. She doesn't have COVID, but at the same, so that is why otherwise she would be here in person.
You are so thoughtful, Jen. You didn't want us to get infected because you were exposed just in case, right?
Right, thank you. Well, Madam Mayor and Council, so this is a continued discussion about the work that we had discussed a few months ago. Ryan, you can go to the next one. So our previous discussion, we talked about a change in the methodology and expanding the area. We talked about half foot front footage and half building area. calculation. We also talked about expanding the area of special assessment to indirectly benefiting property. So they're in the district and they don't really necessarily front the improvements, but they they do benefit. And so what's in blue here is you wanted a little bit more information on some of those additional costs that I had brought up. At the last meeting and what those impacts would be. And then we also talked about what would no assessment look like if we were to remove the assessment. I had shown what the impacts of the general fund would be and the question was, well, what what's the impact to the taxpayer? So I have some a slide on that. And then the last one is with a new idea, what would, what would happen if we reduced the assessment amount and. It's the only cost that were directly impacting the adjacent property owners. And so I have some discussion on that. Next slide. So this is just more for review. This is the map I had shown. The areas that are in blue are the existing assessments. So these are the properties that are already receiving the assessment. And they're directly adjacent. We have two tiers of assessment based on the amenities. And what we're proposing is modifying the calculation so that it's part linear foot and part building square foot. And then when we talking about expanding the area, the properties in yellow are all in the heart of the city, one and two districts. So they're not directly adjacent to the amenities. And so we would propose the building square foot only. Until streetscape gets expanded into those areas. And then lastly, the areas in pink, those are directly adjacent and they aren't currently assessed. They were not included in the original assessment, but they do have that same benefit of being directly adjacent. So we would propose adding them in. And using the two tiers and using the linear frontage and the building square footage. So what I had shown last time was what we didn't include in the cost. We didn't include. Costs for the community landscape position. We weren't including part of the city tree lighting or snowflakes and banners. And then we aren't, we aren't including any of the park maintenance or the parking ramp and parking deck maintenance. And so the council directed us to look at not only adding half of the community landscape position, but also what would the increase be if we included. Heart of the city tree lighting and heart of the city, snowflakes and banners. And the impact would be a twenty nine percent increase in the special assessment. So this slide is that sort of all in slide that shows all of the different calculations that I had shown last time. But really, I wanted to just show that with that twenty nine percent, these are the two properties that I was using as a comparison a lot in the last meeting. With that, the two oh one Burnsville Parkway, if we had the new method, the expansion and the additional costs. Their new assessment would be about forty one hundred. And looking back at what that meant from their original assessment, which was just under six thousand dollars, there's still a reduction in their previous. Assessment calculation. And then our other subject property that I was using for comparison purposes. They had with the new method, the expansion and adding in the costs, their new assessment would be about twenty two hundred. And their previous part of the city assessment before any of these changes was about twenty, just under twenty nine hundred. So it's also a reduction from the original. And at the last presentation, I did go through a lot of slides about who had increases in assessments, who had reductions in assessments. So just because these two properties did show a reduction, those costs are made up when you expand the district to. Include properties that had never been assessed before. So they, that's kind of how that gets taken up in those yellow properties and the pink properties. And then there were some that were in the blue that ended up just because the calculation worked out that way with an increase. So even though these two subject properties did decrease with the added costs, there is an increase somewhere and that's kind of how it's made up. So the no assessment option, most of the slide was in the last presentation. If we just took what we had assessed at hundred and fifty two thousand four hundred and just included it into the city tax levy. It would be a point four percent increase. And so I asked our finance department, what does that mean? That was the question, what does that mean for our residents? And just the typical comparison, I believe, is using a median value home. And that would be an increase of their property tax of six dollars per year, just attributed to stopping the assessment and using that amount in the general fund. So then the last thing that was talked about that the council asked me to look into was, what if we reduce the assessment and just. Made it based on direct benefits. So we included the cost per irrigation, boulevard mowing and sidewalks, no plowing. And the council had mentioned both some of the things that shouldn't be included would be more of the general public features in the medians, the trees, plantings and. And lighting were some things specifically asked not to include. The next slide. And so this is a rough estimate of what those costs would be. We don't necessarily break out those costs now, but we did a. Sort of a good estimate. And if we were to go this route, we would have to structure how we calculate these to get a more precise number. But using estimates, the reduced assessment amount a hundred percent would be fifty five thousand two hundred. And so we've been using a fifty fifty. Cost split, which brings that total cost to twenty seven thousand six hundred. And having an assessment rate of a dollar sixty per foot. And then the bottom half of the slide is just what we have today, our current policy. We assess a hundred and fifty two thousand through seventy five and we have the two tiered approach. With a ten thirty nine per foot in the higher amenity areas and a five seventy nine per foot in the the lower tiered amenities. So looking at this comparison, if we did the reduced assessment in these two sample properties. Two oh one Burnsville Parkway, the new assessment would be nine hundred and forty six dollars. And this is purely based on the linear frontage, so not trying to do a new method. All of the benefits are really linear with boulevard mowing, irrigation and and sidewalks, no plowing. So we kept, I kept the linear foot as the basis. And I didn't break it up into two tiers because it's all the same services. So on the right side, the comparison property would be. Four hundred and six dollars based on their linear front foot.
This distance, I'm having a hard time reading some of the 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 numbers, but can you explain the difference of this slide and the same slide that you did earlier? That was the same pictures, but the different assessment approach?
Sure. So the previous slide was when we talked about adding in new costs. So we were going to add in half of the community landscape position, which ends up being a quarter because you do half of half and then adding in tree lighting costs and adding in the snowflakes, snowflakes and banners. So this slide is showing the calculation that we had with the new method, expanding the area and then adding in additional costs that we hadn't assessed before.
So the numbers on these two examples, which is good that we just, you know, use two so we can kind of use them as a barometer for the changes. The new here, their bill would be forty one twenty three under that scenario or twenty two twenty for the other property. Now can you press that same slide only with the different approach? So this is the new one, it's only, it would only, the forty one hundred dollars would drop to nine hundred and forty six dollars?
Right. So this is just that reduced assessment calculation that only includes irrigation, boulevard mowing and sidewalk snow plowing. As we discussed, that those were the things that were directly benefiting that property owners would have to do themselves. And that was really an impact to those particular properties. So when we take out a lot of the costs, because the costs that are in the heart of the city are more than just those three things, it reduces the assessment down to a very small amount.
Okay, so stop with me. This, the services that property will call it the two oh one, is this receiving the same services as they have before, but under this new formula, their rate would drop to nine forty six, but they wouldn't see any difference?
I don't think that they would see any difference because we would still do the same level of service, but we wouldn't pay for it out of assessments anymore. We would pay for those out of the general fund.
But not all of them out of the general fund?
Right. It's only twenty seven thousand of the three hundred thousand that it takes to operate and maintain. Twenty seven thousand of it were those lesser reduced amounts that were, we called the very direct benefits.
Well, this would be the opposite end of the spectrum of the other one where it was all in, all the new new added costs that aren't currently in the formula. That's the forty one hundred and the twenty two. This is the spectrum where you kind of strip a lot of that out and you only use linear, not linear and square footage to come up with the formula. Okay?
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. So then if we go to the next slide.
Jen?
Yeah.
Let's remember Dan.
So when we look at this one at the nine forty six and the four hundred and six dollars, our costs are still the same. So who picks up the rest of that?
That'd be general fund. So that would be that increase. So if we were to eliminate the assessment altogether, the general fund increase was that point four percent or six dollars of an increase in property taxes to the median valued home. So then if you take out twenty seven thousand and have the rest come out of the general fund, it's going to be, I didn't do the calculation, but it would it would be slightly less than six dollars, say five dollars and the rest would be assessed.
So each year the levy would increase by?
The first year it would increase by point four and then normal cost increases associated with all of that work would also be absorbed, which would be a fraction of that, right? This first year would jump us up to yeah, switch it, right? The liability from the special assessment back to the general levy. Is that correct?
Metamere members of the council, if you were to, if you were to fully take what is currently funded by special assessments, you're looking at a at about a half percentage point increase to the to the levy. And that would obviously change the parameters that we talked about in April, about a half a point. I'm using rough math. Our interim finance director could be more precise than I, but rough math, half a percent.
That's what I'm thinking.
And council member Keely, to your point, that would be that would be increased this year and then operationalized year to year.
Yeah. Okay.
So to do that sort of stripped down assessment, I just wanted to show the impact to the the properties that are kind of in town homes that pay per unit. So collectively, they pay based on the front foot, but then because they're owned and owned condos and townhomes, they get their assessment bill individually. And so the reduced method for the Nicollet Plaza Town Homes goes to thirty three per unit, Nicollet Plaza Condos, five dollars per unit, HFC Villas fifty three per unit, Park Crest eleven and Uptown Landing seven per unit. So there would be a drastic reduction in the per unit for all of those properties, which leads me to my next slide, which is I'll talk a little bit. We would keep it as front footage based, eliminating the two tiers because we're just doing those bare minimum assessments for those services. I continued it with the fifty percent assessment. I would, I'd say it would need further refinement. It was a really kind of a broad brush, but certain properties don't have all of those three services. So there are certain properties that have no boulevard to mow. So we'd have to adjust for that. And then here's the point I wanted to make about the units, that the administrative costs stay the same. So whether we're assessing you know, twenty seven thousand or one hundred fifty two thousand or at the higher end, we have mailings to currently three hundred and eighty one properties. And if any of those properties decide not to just prepay it, it goes on their taxes, it's a charge of five dollars and thirty cents per property. So if we have ones that are five dollars per unit and they just choose not to pay it and it may not be that they are even thinking about it. They get in the mail and say, oh, that'll just be on my taxes. We then pay five dollars and thirty cents to assess that property. So just some things to note, if this were a direction that the council wanted to go. And then next slide. So tonight we're looking for council direction. If you have any other questions on the the additional information I provided, and then if you wanted to go with an assessment, and a change to the assessment policy, other than eliminating it, we would engage with property owners and then bring back the final policy for approval at a regular meeting.
Comments? Because you have three points that you want us to provide more detail or removing the special, you did that. So you brought all of that information. The other was limiting the special assessment. And then the other one was keeping from the beginning what we had agreed to, and that's expanding the special assessment to include more costs that previously had not been assessed. Right. That was the original plan.
Yep. So that was what I had taken from the last council meeting in the end of March. And so hopefully I was able to provide enough additional information and now tonight we're looking just for how the council would like to proceed with either the change in methodology to expand the district. And then if you wanted us to include those additional costs or keep them as they are, if you wanted to eliminate the assessment or if you wanted to change it to that reduced or direct assessment method.
Council member Keely.
I feel like I'm shopping. And by the way, lots of great data and that was a deep dive.
Very deep.
It just not having it in the background took me a while to absorb it from a distance. I'm not used to sitting this far away from that screen. Usually I sit over there, it's like conceal. Yeah, I'm sure you can. So do you, normally when you have this many options, you can check a box and then you can get one screen where you can compare side by side. Did you by chance prepare anything like that at all?
I did not.
It's like, because there's so much there, I want to try and get it now back pulled together where I can just see sort of the net. Alright, so it sounds like we have four options and for me, living in the district, thinking about the option of going no assessment and just putting it into the general fund. I do feel, and I've heard many, many complaints by residents over the years, before I even moved into the heart of the city, of the heart of the city, getting all of these nice amenities and et cetera, et cetera, and everybody paying for them, but only the ones people living down there get to enjoy them or live where they feel like they can enjoy because they live amongst it. And the clarification was the general public is paying for half of it and the people down there are paying for the other half roughly give or take. Right? So I do believe that there's a responsibility if you live down there to pay something because it is quite different. Yeah. I mean, there is absolute measurable benefits to living in the heart of the city and having all those things. Some of those benefits, I think, are benefiting the whole city. Like the the flags and some of the, you know, light poles or some of the other things I, it's it's not material enough to say, wow, I live in, you know, the area with these, these things, snow plowing, additional landscaping, you know, the quick attention to the the clearing of the sidewalks. Those are tangible benefits that we see, feel and experience when you live down there. And so I think we have an obligation to pay for that. So I guess I'm okay with the split, whatever that split might be, rather than the concept of just throwing the whole thing into the general fund. I'm back to my original thought process of, I really want it, I'd hope that
yourself around.
Yeah, well, I just, I did think through that. I wanted to respect your idea because I actually thought there was
trashing on you. I understand.
It's my job.
So we, back to that, let's, you know, not have apartment complexes like the Maven sit right on the edge of the heart of the city and pay nothing for being there, right? So expanding the scope of the properties is I'm a hundred percent in support of that still. I haven't changed my mind on that. How we got there and, you know, some of the properties, I get there's, it's more scientific than just throw the property in, they're now part of the pool, they pay period, whatever. It's a little more defined than that. I'm not as, I guess I'm not as high today on throwing in these additional costs that currently aren't because some of them I actually don't necessarily agree that they bring a material improvement to the people living there as much as those other things as I just articulated. So I'm less apt to say, let's throw in all those other things. I like keeping the cost model that we had. I like adding the additional properties in and just essentially, you know, letting, making sure that everybody that's benefiting, either I'm benefiting on this side of the street or I'm benefiting on the other side of the street because that's the circumstances that we had, right? And and letting the model go as far as the costs go where they go. I do, I did personally like the combination of square footage and linear feet because it seemed like it it helped balance those those circumstances where you have a huge lot with a tiny building or a giant building on a tiny lot, right? It helped at least moderate that. So I thought that was the right approach. So one of your four examples, I think, hit on the one that I personally happened to support. But I'm not sure which one because we don't have that side by side and I can just point to it.
It would be this one here without this, without the bottom bullet. Would be that situation.
And that is the the content that I provided on the twenty ninth. That was the bulk of the presentation on the twenty nine, on March twenty ninth, was that half front footage, half building area and expanding. And Ryan, do you want to go to the next one, which is the map? Expanding the district to these additional properties.
Yeah, blue, yellow and pink.
Yeah.
Yep. Had agreed to.
And then I think the example properties that you had, if you could go to the one that reflects that.
Yeah, so that would be the not blue, right above the blue is that new method with expansion. So for two oh one, it'd be thirty one ninety six. And their previous assessment calculation was closer to six thousand. So it's just about in half.
I think it, that's, that I think was the right, that's the right thing to do in my opinion for a building with those circumstances, right? With that huge frontage, because it's a triangular shaped property. And they were for decades being or over a decade being unfairly assessed, an excessively high dollar amount. Getting it to a number that is half of that, I think, is at least more in the reason, reasonable range. And for the other property, I think it took them down a little bit. Was it seventeen hundred and what are they paying currently? Twenty eight, twenty nine hundred? Yeah. So you know, the two properties that I think were good examples to use somewhat of two extremes, you know, small lot, big building and, you know, big lot, small building. I helped get us there. So that's the one that I think I can support today.
This one?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Brings us back to our original plan.
That's, yeah. Which is, but you know what? It gets some clarity and that helps when you understand. So is everybody okay with the fifty fifty? Kara? Okay.
I do not have strong, strong feelings in this. I, I am glad it's being addressed. I'm glad we looked at everything carefully. I'm, I'm happy that it appears that we will not have the excessive outliers. So
But everybody is going to pay and and still the community at large is still going to be paying.
Can I ask a quick follow up question? Are we going to be implementing any of the streetscaping on Pleasant or the other road that wraps around kind of parallel to Pleasant? Yeah.
That will be eventual. We don't have a plan right now to do it, but when we do, then we'll include them into that combination or higher level assessment that includes both the frontage and the building square footage. But for now, they don't have that amenity. So we would keep them at the building square footage for now of being part of that benefited but indirect benefit.
And when time comes, we should put up some of that decorative lighting in those areas.
Don't we have some decorative in some of those areas already?
No.
In front of Maven, we do though.
We do. In front of Maven, they installed that lighting with their project.
And I believe Maven's responsible for their own snow removal and turf, right?
No. So we, we are doing the snow removal until they'll be added in to that higher tier with this reevaluation.
Need to do, baby. Yeah.
And they're using the parking deck quite extensively over here as well.
I think that's going to be a Joel question on that PUD. The reason that's, that's another topic.
The reason why I mentioned it is because there is a direct benefit
Oh, yeah.
to that building, probably more so than any other property in that area with having free parking, you know, right across the street. So.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. So so what you have is the fifty fifty model.
So it's this top change of method expansion, half front, half building, indirect, but no including the additional costs. We're not including the community landscape persons in the winter holiday lighting. That's, we're not going to include those costs as part of them. What my understanding of the direction is.
Say again what you're saying. I think we're going to all of the costs.
The blue in this one indicates that we would include half of the community landscape position and also the cost for the winter lighting as part of the assessment calculation. What I'm hearing is you don't want to include the additional costs for those items with this. You want to use the top bullet here, change the methodology and expand it half based upon front footage, half based on building size and the expansion of the district, but you don't want to include those extra costs associated with the community landscape person and the winter lighting in the assessment calculation.
Right, because that's like a twenty nine percent increase.
That would have been a twenty nine percent increase.
Yeah, you're right.
That's what we're saying?
Yeah.
Yes.
But you're still going to have within
It would be
You'll still have the landscaping and the and the snow removal.
Nothing will change from the service level. It's just we're not, we talked about including a couple more things in the calculation.
Yeah.
We investigated it and now the direction is we don't want to do that. So we want to be down here.
What we have.
Right. On this slide with new method plus expansion right here, what we're doing with new method, we're not adding additional costs.
Correct.
Okay.
I think that was the original conversation.
That was at the last one, yeah. So we're happy to look at those couple of last couple of things. Jen did a great job of putting all that through.
Okay.
And thinking it through.
Jen and Ryan, you have the direction?
The next steps I would say are that we will be reaching out to everybody to give them the new policy direction and then so if needed, we will need it, we'll do it. And then the next, after that, we'll bring back the final policy language for approval.
And that's, this is going to be part of your difficult work.
Yes. Yes, but we, our intention is to try and do it this summer so that we can then assess using this new method, our twenty twenty Um, our twenty twenty one cost, so we'll be trying to implement it for the twenty twenty two assessment.
Okay, very good. Every, uh, bed.
I don't want to waste this opportunity, um, since we're talking about this and I'm not asking you to put this on. Not asking you to put what I'm about to ask you into this project, but I'm just curious. This isn't, I mean, just, um, is there a way that we could look at? It just, it seems like the M W F building is taking full advantage of that parking deck at, at no cost, you know, not to the.
M W F.
I'm sorry, maybe, I knew there was an M in there.
Um, yeah.
But is there a way to explore, and I'm not asking for this to be on anything in the coming weeks or months. But I just, it seems like there's an opportunity or. Something there that we're missing because of that entire lower level of that deck being used by the tenants of that building. And I don't know if that's an assessment or something else.
I don't know.
Which is why I'm mentioning it, right?
Isn't that so? The city though?
Yes. Parking for people who live down there.
That's what.
But it's still, but it's still public parking for the entire. Can't use it because the half of the lower level is always taken up by someone.
I, I get, I get that part, but I'm just saying the way it was set up, it was that.
Going to look at that when we, when we look at these P U Ds that come and then they say, huh, can we use?
Yeah, because I know we've included that ramp several, on several projects.
Right, yeah, we have. We've used that as proof of parking for several.
So if it's proof of parking, then they should have the right to park there.
Well, what I'm saying is it's a public ramp. Able to use it because it's being used exclusively by tenants.
Yeah.
It's not reserved, they just have to get there first.
Or, or, you know, when the Ames Center has all of those competitions and now they're parking and.
I, I admit it's a problem, but I'm just saying the way it was set up and it has proof of party for everybody. How do you take that away from them?
Well, that's why I'm asking the question is, is there something that we can explore there? I don't know what it would even be.
Yeah.
But since we're talking about this and using amenities in the heart of the city and charging for them, this seems like an amenity.
Yeah.
That's being used and not being charged for, a pretty big one. I'm not advocating for new charges necessarily, maybe I am, but, um. It's just in the spirit of what we're talking about, it's not an opportunity to bring it up.
Ryan, I know you sat me down and you showed me all the parking around the heart of the city, blah, 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 blah. Okay, Ryan.
Lots of blah, blahs.
Uh, because I didn't like it.
Three things, uh, Maven was approved with less parking on the facility than would have been required by, and so that's just a fact.
Well, they had enough underground parking. And they have surface parking, but they don't want to pay for their underground parking, so they're using ours.
I'm just saying that the approval that they got showed less parking than what was necessary according to the code. So that's just a fact. Um, Jenny was here, right? If Jenny was here, um, she could explain it a little better than I. Um, item two, in the heart of the city framework plan, we like explained that, or we explained at the one event. We literally went to an event that had more than seventy, eight hundred people in it. And we did not have a parking problem that night. I mean, the, the deck was full. But there were huge expanses of parking areas that were not being used. And my third item is out of the framework plan is, was it, one of the outcomes was we need a, to look at the heart of the city parking. So I think the right mechanism is will be during that study to identify and discuss the things, exact things you're talking about. I know, Jen, do you know when we're potentially putting that in the capital improvement plan for a study?
We are planning, uh, twenty twenty three.
It's something that's on our radar.
Yep.
That's, I guess, the short version of.
Yeah.
The short answer to my very long question, so.
All right.
Because it is, it is a concern because we hear about it and that's why I talked with you. And you sat me down and you looked at all and you say, here's all these parking and it's not being utilized.
Yep.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, so it is on the twenty twenty three capital improvement plan.
It'll be part of what we bring forward to you.
And, and from here on in, Mr. City Manager, when we're going to be doing these development. We're going to be looking very carefully at the parking models for all of these buildings and how they're going to be. You know, and maybe we, we say, if you're going to have underground parking, pay for your underground parking. So that the city's public parking is available for the public. Okay.
Have a good night.
Okay, you, 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 um, have all of your directions then for.
Thank you.
You, and thank you, Jen, for everything. Yeah. Okay, the next item, this is the discussion and update of the Dakota Broadband. Board activities and, uh, our IT Director Tom Venables is going to. Here with us. What's going on? And I believe. Is, oh, there she is. Okay, Kara Coke is joining us virtually. Welcome, Kara.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council members. I had a, uh, conflict with another meeting earlier, so I appreciate the opportunity to. Attend via Zoom and answer questions if needed.
Tom, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Um, I'm here tonight as a follow up to conversations that, um, council had. Uh, started and requested as of our February, um, update in the work session roundtable at that point in time. And one of the follow up items was, um, asking staff to provide and prepare possible scenarios for council to consider. Um, and so the conversation has changed a little bit since then, um, since February. And, um, since then, shortly after that conversation here, um. Dakota County had indicated that they were going to pursue exiting the D B B. So that paused our process a little bit in terms of our scenarios that we were preparing at the time. So that we could understand exactly what the county's exit announcement meant. Um, and so. Now we know more, obviously. Um, and as at the last D B B board meeting, um. Matt Smith, the, the county administrator, provided an overview to the D B B board members. Um, on the direction that the general government and policy committee, or they call it the G G P. Um, gave Dakota County staff, um, and that was to start planning, uh, final exit plans. Um, for the county to consider acting on. And then they also asked, um, the members, the D B B members to have conversations, bring conversations back to their own elected, um, boards. And, um, identify any departure concerns, any items that needed to be addressed and implications. And then also help the county create those plans for their exit. Um, and then also they stress the need to consider and, and move forward on future collaborative efforts. That could continue on as, as, as a outcome of, um, the county's exit. And also to keep in line with what the D B B represented, and that was a collaborative and coordinated effort through the membership. Uh, their goal is to have a plan back to the D B B board by July, so that the D B B board can consider, um, what to do. Um, and so therefore staffer here tonight, I'm here tonight to facilitate, uh, discussion on the assessment. Of some possible si- the, the scenarios and the impact that the D B B or the county's exit from the D B B has on us. And, um, answer any other questions that may come up in this process. As part of that, I prepared information that we know, things that we don't know in the process going forward right now. Um, and I'll go over those quickly. Uh, I know that many, many of you are aware of a lot of these items, but. Um, just in order to provide, uh, any, um, questions and answers that I can clarify. Um, what we do know as part of the process right now is that, um, Dakota County staff are working on that exit plan. As I mentioned earlier, and they, their goal is to bring it back to the July D B B board meeting. Um, what we don't know about that right now is all the implications and options that. That might be available to the members to minimize that departure on the, the remaining members. Um, what if any new agreements may be needed, um, or changes? Some of the next steps that are part of that process is to create, we created an ad hoc group. Um, made up of existing members and Dakota County staff to bring that plan. Planning forward and make sure that we can identify all those pieces that are unknown right now. Um, what we also know is that the, um, current year's budget or the twenty twenty two budget. Um, is in place and the current members are obligated to that. And most recently, um, council did approve our payments for the twenty twenty two budget. Um, what we don't know is what impact on other contracts that have to be maintained, um, that may need to proceed and what the. The length of those contracts might have on, um, on this process. One in particular, um, that we've talked about previously is, uh, the large contract with Logis. And Logis is the technology consortium that manages and maintains the fiber infrastructure on behalf of the D B B membership today. That contract goes through, um, July thirtieth of twenty twenty three. Um, and so it has to be addressed in some fashion. And again, that's another topic that the ad hoc group is working on right now to finalize and provide some options on what, what might need to be done or considered. Um, and then there is a fund balance that exists too in, at the D B B of approximately four hundred thousand dollars. That will have to be, um, dealt with and distributed in some fashion. There is some language in the current joint powers agreement that does address that. But it is a topic that the board still will need to discuss and make some plans around. Um, one of the concepts or one of the, of the ideas discussed at this point would be maybe we pay for existing contract obligations using that fund balance. That's just one option to consider. But again, that's part of the ad hoc group's job to come up with those options so that the board can make some decisions on that. Um, what we also know is we all have active fiber projects in process and pending projects that are on the twenty twenty two plans. And we had further year plans out, so we have to address those and how we go about those. Um, what we don't know is how all those projects may be impacted because some projects go beyond twenty twenty two. Fiber projects in some, depending on the scope or the scale of those projects can be very large and may continue on beyond twenty twenty two. So we, the ad hoc group is also addressing those. And then there was, as I indicated earlier, um, there was a desire to further, um. Continue a collaborative effort and create maybe some type of new agreement, whether it's a new joint powers agreement, some other type of agreement. That could continue on a collaborative process so that we would be able to work with. Similar capacity with members of the D B B and maybe other types of members that aren't part of the D B B in some similar fashion. What does that mean? That's part of that process to bring it back, um, for the board to. Uh, consider in the future. So as part of that, um, and as a follow up to, um. Your direction in February for some scenarios, I prepared, um, some additional information. On, um. What would it mean if the county were to exit and then Burnsville were also to consider to egg, consider exit scenarios as part of this process? But to put that in perspective, I also wanted to provide some additional detail so that, um, there was some understanding of. What, what, what were our costs and what were our impacts, um, prior to our participation in the D B B? And that would have been prior to twenty eighteen. So prior to twenty eighteen, all of our fiber projects and activity were, were managed in-house, um, staff managed. Um, we did both, um, institutional network projects and we had also had leasing and licensing of. Fiber to private parties, um, prior to twenty eighteen. That took approximately three quarters of a staff person to do that type of activity. And it was actually multiple staff people that made up that three quarters time. Um, our approximate cost estimate in that time period was about a hundred sixty thousand, um, on average. Um, per year to do that kind of activity. And we had less fiber route miles back then. We had approximately twenty nine fiber miles, um, back in that time period. Um, we had higher cost contracts compared, compared to the contracts we have today with the D B B. Um, when we had no external pursuit of funding because we didn't have the staff resources of the time to do any kind of pursuit of grants. Or any kind of broadband funding mechanism. So our costs and our activities and. Um, we're a little higher as a result, and we also did less projects on an annual basis. Um, our staffing capacity at that time was limited in the fact that we could do, um, one project at a time. And in, in some cases, uh, a few projects at a time, but not, not to the degree that we're doing projects today as part of the D B B. And then our current state with the D B B, which is a current twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two budget. It's D B B managed, um, as we've talked about for the last four years. Um, we've done I net projects in that four year period. We have done no commercial or, um, private leasing of, um. Fiber during that period under the D B B. Um, it's taken approximately a quarter of an F T E time. That's primarily my time, um, as my participation in the D B B process. And then, um, we have more fiber route miles since we started in twenty eighteen with the D B B. We have now almost ten more miles of fiber. Um, this is based on the twenty twenty two budget, but by the end of this budget year, um, we'll have approximately forty miles of fiber in place.
We own that fiber.
That's all city owns. Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's all city.
We'll have about forty miles of fiber.
And to clarify that too further, the D B B has no, um, um, Burnsville assets, uh, allocated to them. So Burnsville owns all their assets.
Yeah.
At this time. Um, we did obviously see a reduction in staff time as I indicated. Um, we, we did a lot of collaborative projects, coordination of projects, coordination of contracts for, uh, Go For One locates. Fiber breaks and fix locate, um, contracts. And then, uh, we also created standards and then we increased the number of I net projects or the, the fiber projects we do on an annual basis. Um, so that's as, as we participated in the D B B, um, our average cost is about a hundred eighty four thousand. Um. So, um, as part of the possibility of looking at scenarios for Burnsville's exit. Uh, through this process going forward, we tried to prepare at least three different scenarios to consider. And, um, these scenarios, um, were a little fluid for a while until we understood exactly what the county was going to, um, proceed with. And now that we know that the county is making plans to exit, um, this is some, um. Best information that we could put together at the time given. So scenario one is really kind of going back to where we were prior to twenty eighteen, going back to bringing it back in house a hundred percent. It's going to require an F T E. We can't backfill any, um, staff time, uh, towards any fiber projects. We don't have staff time to put towards any fiber projects, um, moving forward. So we would have to hire an F T E. Um, this is an F T E that's not been included in the organizational analysis study. So this would be above and beyond what's already been proposed in that org, org study. This would, this new, this position would spend time on all those same activities prior to what we were doing at the D B B. Uh, we would have to create new contracts, get new contracts with vendors. We wouldn't have a lot of time to do collaborative projects. We would focus on our city specific projects only. And then, uh, we would go back to some of the same, um, issues that we had prior and that we wouldn't have time for funding. Um, looking for funding, we wouldn't have time for other activities, uh, other. I T related activities other than working on, um, fiber capital projects on an annual basis. And just to give you some sense of what, what that means, in twenty twenty two alone, we have eight fiber projects going on that are Burnsville involved. Projects, um, and we anticipate that we would continue on, uh, in our long term capital plans. We have multiple fiber projects annually going forward. Our cost in that scenario, um, was estimated at about two hundred thirty seven thousand. That's including the one F T E plus all the contract costs that we would expect and then the increased, um, cost of our, our maintenance contracts that we would have. But it would include the one F T. Uh, and I will say this at this time, all three scenarios in assumes an F T E would need, be needed. Um, primarily because although in some of the subsequent scenarios we're talking about, some additional staff time would be saved. Um, that could be put towards other activities in I T that could benefit the city and the city operations. Um, so all three scenarios do assume a full time F T. It would be very difficult to hire a part time. I T staff person to work on these projects. And so the assumption would be we would hire a full time I T staff person, e- either of the three scenarios to work on. Fiber projects, but each scenario, um, provides additional, um, staff time to do other things. Um, that is scenario two and three do. So scenario two is really what I'll call a hybrid scenario. It's, um. Hiring a staff person, but also leveraging Logis services like we do as part of the D B B today. To manage our overall fiber assets and our projects and our maintenance. Um, we would still have to have a locate, locate contract, um, and then we would also have, um. Other activities, excuse me, with an I T staff person that would be focused on working with Logis on those projects. But it would not require as much time, so we could allocate more of that F T E towards other I T projects in the organization. Uh, we would gain benefit of pursuing time for funding opportunities. We'd also have an ability to collaborate with other Logis members. That are doing similar activities because Logis would be that conduit for us to be aware of those collaborative efforts. Um, so scenario two builds upon, um, scenario one, but adds Logis as a service, um, to help us in that effort. The costs does go up as a result because of that Logis contract primarily, um, up to about two hundred fifty seven thousand. Um, and then scenario three, um, is what I would call the best of all, all three scenarios in, in terms of. It gives us a, a very similar. It gives us a very similar approach to what the DBB represented for our organization. It allows us to transition more efficiently and faster from where we're at if we were to exit the DBB into a scenario. Because it assumes we would have new collaborative effort and agreements with other former DBB members or even new DBB. Or new members of some kind. And it wouldn't be to form a new organization. It would just be. A new agreement to continue on collaborative projects, very similar to what we do with transportation projects with Dakota County and others. It takes the best of what scenario two represents, but it builds upon that. And it provides additional staff time to do other collaborative projects and activities within our own organization. But also as part of the the new agreement. The cost is relatively the same as scenario two, but the benefits increase. Because it does allow us to allocate more IT resources to other IT activities. And then it also provides a higher level of what I would call collaboration and coordination of effort between. Those former DBB members. This is also a very similar approach to what the county hopes to achieve. In that they want to create and form some. New type of agreement that could continue on the collaborative efforts as similar to the DBB as possible. The counties also indicated that this would also give them the ability to do CNET projects on their own if needed or where they needed. And when I say CNET, obviously I mean commercial arrangements with third parties without committing other members or other organizations to any of those projects. It gives some more independence to those activities. So with these scenarios. Given this different scenarios, from a staff recommendation standpoint, scenario three would. Be the least problematic to transition to. It'd be this very similar to what the DBB provides us today. And also provides us the benefit of adding some additional IT resources to do those activities. And also other activities within the organization. It also leverages those Logis services. I didn't mention that, but scenario three is very similar to scenario two because it would continue on using Logis as that. Organization that could provide those management and maintenance services for us. With all this, that cost we're estimating to be about similar to scenario two, but with the bigger benefits, scenario three. With this. I guess staff would be looking for your direction on which scenario would be preferred or considered. As a an item that we could bring forward and start making plans around. Once the the county has finalized their exit plans. And that's our our hope right now too is we would recommend that we let the county process continue on. And find be finalized so that they can finalize their exit details so that we all understand the full implications of their exit. And whatever recommendations come out of that ad hoc committee. That ad hoc committee has been meeting on a weekly basis now for the last three weeks and we're going to continue to meet. Until we can put together the information prior to that July meeting for the DBB board.
Okay, council members, you know, as I listen to all of this, this is, you know. We understand the direction that the county is moving. And the scenarios that you have outlined for us. And the third scenario is what you think is the best for us. But as we move forward and because of our past experience, not only with the DBB, but. I'd like to make sure, Joel, that whatever agreement comes out, that. It's going to be for Burnsville's interest. You know, and because this has some cost impacts. And this is additional to the staffing analysis that we just heard. So. I think we cautiously move forward. What are your thoughts? Yes, Vince?
Tom, that was very helpful. Has Dakota County mentioned anything about taking on some of the FTE burden? You know, administrating, obviously, we're there. This is all still a new baby being born, but. Has that discussion come up about them maybe shouldering some of that responsibility? You know, on behalf of this new ad hoc or anything of that nature?
No details are coming out about that. The indications that we're getting at least early on is that they're. The resources that they are planning for are for county operations and activities and not as a part of. A resources that would be available to others, but maybe that could come out of that group if it's a recommendation to the. The the board and the other members to consider. I can't speak for the county, but it's possible. There's just no early direction that they're giving that they would offer that as part of their process. What they have indicated is they're interested in continuing to leverage Logis services similar to what we're indicating in our at least two scenarios. And again, from what we're hearing from the county staff is that scenario three is similar to what they're hoping for and that. They would just create some new collaborative type of agreement that would leverage Logis and collaborate on ongoing projects. And the county may be considered a lead project because they own sixty percent of the fiber in the county. So much of the fiber that they do own, others depend on in some capacity. But they are, at least at this point, not indicating that they would provide staffing resources for the rest of us.
Okay, Greg.
Mayor and council, council member Workman to your question. Although that is the answer that we have right now, scenario, scenario three does provide us with. Much more flexibility in the org analysis numbers that you just saw. To include some of that work in the one FTE that that Tom is recommending in scenario three said another way. Scenario three reduces the FTE burden that was just presented to you in the IT department through the org analysis. So it gives us some flexibility. And I would be, I would be less concerned about the FTE impact in scenario three. Should that be the direction than the other scenarios?
Well, the one thing that I liked about what you're saying about scenario three is that we will have the capacity to. Do some things that we couldn't do if we were just looking at scenario one or two. Where we would reach out for some other grants and so forth. With three where we wouldn't be able to do any of that in two and one. Because they'll be just focused on managing. This infrastructure that we have. And the feds are coming out with a lot of money for broadband. And a lot of what the that money. The higher. Priority is if you're a collaborative.
Madam Mayor, to to that point, that's part of the the emphasis of the the conversation with the ad hoc group is that. As a group, we we form much more ability to go after those types of funds together. Each of us would have to still represent ourselves as part of a collaborative, but we could do it on behalf of multiple members rather than individual members. And at least with the recent IIJA federal grants that are coming down for broadband. Those have a lot of criteria around group efforts or collaborative efforts and partnerships with the private sector and with other public entities. So there is really a focus on that rather than as an individual organization.
Yeah, when we look at that and Greg and Joel, it's very important that we, whatever that agreement is. I want to make sure that that Burnsville is not going to suffer. Yeah, Dan G.
I'm I'm a little confused about the county and what they're doing. And I know you don't work for the county. But you just stated that the county intends to fully pursue CNET over there. Not that that was an issue for the county. When did that change? And why did that change? Do you know?
In my opinion, I think the county's been interested in providing some CNET services in certain parts of the county. Primarily, a conversation has been in the southern rural areas where there may not be as much service. That's been more of their focus recently in their conversations. I haven't been part of their board meeting conversations or the GGP. Conversations in terms of CNET, but they've kept the CNET conversation moving forward, at least on their part, because they hope to possibly still provides. The ability for some of that activity go for on their own without bringing in other members or requiring other members to be part of that. Again, we haven't focused a lot on that conversation in our ad hoc committee meetings. We're focused more on the collaborative. Effort and language of whatever new agreement would go forward.
Kara Coke, do you have anything to add? To answer Dan G's question with regard to the county?
I know, Madam Mayor, council members, of course, I also don't work for the county, but my understanding from the conversations that I've heard is the. Some county board members expressed interest in potential CNET projects if they have the opportunity to review those. You know, and make decisions on those on an individual basis. So I think. They are interested in the they had wanted to have the prerogative to decide whether or not to move forward with those projects as they were potentially presented.
Okay, isn't that true for all cities of Philly? We we do it anyways. So that's.
And we'll know everything by July. So, you know, the thing is, what is Burnsville's destination? That's what's important to us. So. Greg and Tom, you guys are saying scenario three. And as I look at it. If we're going to go after some of these federal funds and some of that federal fund goes through the state. And some of the criteria is that it's on collaboration. So for me, it's I want to make sure that Burnsville is going to be protected, whatever the partnership looks like. Council members, are you okay with three?
Three after we hear what the county's gonna do if we want to be a part of it or not.
Yeah, but.
Well, it's not just the county, though.
Yeah.
There's other DBB members. In the last DBB board. There was a lot of interest in still considering collaboration and finding ways to collaborate going forward. So there is still an appetite for that. They're just looking for what is the common denominator that we can collaborate around. And then let's do that and go forward. But there was a lot of interest, not just from the county, but pretty much from all the other members. That that's something they were they were interested in and wanted to look forward and explore. So. I I mean, I lean towards scenario three because I do think that there is value in. You know, in working in areas that we have in common and we are happy and can agree to work together and. And then we go forward with that. So that's my view on that, but we'll need to.
Well, the the only thing that Tom and and Greg and our staff is looking. Where should they concentrate their effort? And from where I'm sitting and I'm hearing Tom say he favors scenario three. And with everything that I've been reading about the infrastructure innovation jobs act. That came from the feds. It's about collaboration that puts you at the top of the priority list in terms of funding. And so. But the thing is, it's how that agreement is designed. And so for me, looking at scenario three allows staff to begin some work, our work. We know that we we know the DBB is going to be dissolved.
I do not know that.
We don't know that.
Well, the county is exiting.
The the county is exiting and. You know. So that so that we all have this information and people at home have this information as well, so that we're all on the same footing on this. There was discussion at the DBB of even though the county is exiting, does that mean that the DBB dissolves? Or do the cities still stay together in the DBB? And if they did, what would that look like? Is it possible? Is it something we would want to do? Do I think there's a higher probability that it will dissolve? I do. I mean, just from a practical standpoint, but that also gets to where I was saying. There is a high degree of willingness amongst DBB members to find out. How do we still continue working together with one another, whether that's officially within the DBB or whether it's some other type of agreement? But that's where it is presently.
Well, the thing is, when you really look at the infrastructure and the assets, the county has the most and Burnsville has the second.
That is correct.
And that and everybody else doesn't have the kind of asset capacity that we have.
You've got that right.
Yeah. And so the thing is, I'm looking out for Burnsville.
You bet.
So.
Madam Mayor, too, to that term that we I keep using collaborative, that's inclusive of collaborating on contracts and maintenance agreements. And materials procurement and other activities that have saved us funds over the last four years as a result of the quantity. And the volume that we've been able to do as a group. Now, would that change potentially if there's some hybrid group of the DB former or remaining DBB members in the county? Maybe we don't know that yet. We're working in those details.
Okay. What do you want from us this evening? To give you direction?
Council, I would recommend that we wait for the county to finalize their exit plans and from that process. Before we make any final plans of our own.
Then then we do that. We'll wait till till after July, but you've already outlined for us that the best. Method moving forward would be scenario three.
And we can use that as a framework to finalize the details so that if the council were to consider our exit. Then we can finalize what scenario three would mean.
Okay, so we wait till after July. Okay, Karen, Dan, Vince, okay. Direction will will wait till after July, but you at least have set forth scenarios that would be good for us.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Tom. Thank you, Tom. And then Joel. When you guys look at that agreement. Yes. And it better be. Favor Burnsville.
Joel and I enjoy discussing broadband.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kara.
Thank you very much. Okay. Joel, I don't know if you want to stick around for reports, but if you wish to exit. You may, you and Tom may, because now we're gonna go on the reports. Vince, I think you have, oh, what would you like? You do. Oh, that's right. You have a round table. You have a round table. It's Michelle. Fifteen applications, people. Michelle is speaking.
We have, so we have seven new. Applicants to interview. I did see that one of the incumbents asked to. I'm thinking around eight interviews. And if you would like to have ten or fifteen minute interviews.
Yeah, and you're saying that the incumbents we just. Yeah. Okay, so ten-minute interview, eight. If she has, if she has service. Come in in person. Yeah.
But for any that could not make it in person, we're gonna allow them.
Okay.
So you're still comfortable with the ten-minute interviews?
Sure.
Okay, and then what time would you like to start?
I had four o'clock in the count.
We block it off.
Yeah.
Just because it's.
Are you okay with four o'clock? Are you okay with four o'clock, Dan? Okay, no.
Four thirty where I'm at, so I'm good.
Okay, five thirty. We'll start at five thirty.
Okay, so that'll probably that'll, that will likely put us around being at around seven PM. Do we need to incorporate unless we incorporate a dinner break into there?
Dinner break. Yeah, okay, no dinner.
Unless Greg wants to make
No, no dinner. We'll just have a good snack.
Council member Workman, I would love to make you dinner. However, I will be in Florida, so you'll enjoy Michelle and not me.
Well, as long as Mac brings something in.
And it's BJ. Is BJ going to be present? No?
It's my plan for Michelle.
Michelle, okay, all right. So your round table is done. Okay, very good. All right, Vince?
As usual, I don't have much to report on. Because I have nothing to report on.
Okay. Dan K?
As usual, I don't have but a lot to report.
So if you stay within your area of agencies, that'd be good. MBTA. Really, a, a whole lot about TIS.
About what?
You're in the NLC committee.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I wasn't at the last meeting because they had I tried to get them to move it, but they wouldn't. I shared the ridership report.
Yeah.
With
And I went through the groundbreaking for the garage.
And you were there thinking was a groundbreaking, which I couldn't be there because they didn't offer me a remote option from the Minneapolis Express in that rider report is actually recovering faster than the St. Paul express, but overall express is still way down. I mean, it was ninety-two percent off during the pandemic and it's recovered to about seventy percent off. So we've got about thirty percent. So there's still a lot of room for growth for express service to come back. Microtransit is just flat out exploding in growth and the demand is huge. I don't know if this, I think this was in the, the presentation, but I'll highlight it. When Egan was added in the on-demand MBTA connect, it instantly became the largest area of usage and demand.
No, I saw that in your report.
It was amazing how quickly it Well, it had the benefit of a lot of like the last couple of years of it being marketed and, and where you know, it was started in Savage and Burnsville when it was completely unknown. So a little bit of benefit of some branding and awareness, but it was, it was interesting. It took off. Tab. Biggest things are some discussions related to the the star of the north. What is the, the freight train going?
Star, Starline.
North Starline, sorry.
Star of the
Star of the North, yeah. It's not such a rock star. It is when it comes to subsidies. It's massive. Between Anoka County and Metro Transit. But a lot of bantering, you're probably reading above the paper that you can research yourself. The, we had a discussion about the cost overruns with the Southwest Light Rail. And the sixty-two and a half million adjustment to actual cost, which seems to be a fraction of what the cost overruns are actually running. But because TAB is allocating federal money and that's involved in that project. We had to vote to adjust and allocate sixty-two and a half million or approve it. Metro Transit made the statement that most of it's federal money, obviously, but twelve and a half million is actually coming out of Metro Transit and that they're going to shift funding from other projects to cover this. And the other projects will continue to get funding using non-metro, non-federal metro transit funding. Code for their, their shifting the, the buckets around. That normally that I think would be considered questionable government. But Commissioner Look from Anoka County asked whether there are rules regarding shifting funding of this kind because the counties weren't allowed to do it. They were held to a, a tighter standard under the C-Tip. Mary Stevens, Member Stevens asked, will there be more requested because sixty-two seems to be a small portion of what the reports have been as far as Southwest Light Rails funding deficits or overs. And Nick Thompson from my council said that this is normal. That there's been a lot of, there's a lot of budget shifting that's been done in the past and noted that the audit that was requested by the legislature will kick off in the spring. So it's probably possibly this month and it will run a full year to complete. So no one will know how messy that Southwest White Rail funding and project is until about a year from now. May still not be built by then anyway. There were some split votes on that, on that particular passage of the additional allocation of money because there were a lot of very disappointed members of TAB of how that project's been going. And I'm sure they're not in a unique position at all. Their funding was given to the Met Transit to do a equity study. And it's a trying to think of what it was called, Equity in Transportation Study. And actually Bolton Mink is part of this consultants and they have a branch here in Brussels. So it was good to see them get the nod on their bid. The majority of the policy group that will do this study from participation will be people of color. And then we had a presentation on, and there's many other things that we discussed in the past, but the, I'm trying to stand highlights. We had a safe systems presentation. Too bad Ryan isn't here for this, but safety and design systems for roads for safer auto pedestrian intersections. Was an interesting presentation. I thirty-five is this Thursday. We didn't have a meeting last month. And STA met yesterday, yes, yesterday. And everyone is basically, all of the STA members are reporting express services is a very slow recovery, recovery with a long way to go. And best funding, which the suburban transit providers rely upon has throughout the entire pandemic has remained above budget almost every single month, which was a bit of a surprise, but because of the difficulty in supply chain issues, providing car lots with new cars. The sales of used cars sort of filled in the gap. And so overall and best funding has continued to come in at or above budget all throughout the pandemic and continues to do so. It's almost as if the supply chain never really hit the sales. It did for new car lots, but not for used. Used was very robust and made up the difference. So the, the comment I made earlier about Egan, that's forty-eight percent of all micro transit trips under MVTA is happening in Egan and that almost instantly went from zero to forty-eight when we expanded up there. So basically half of all the, the trips. And let's see, spring was exceptional. Nothing big there. Oh, the Southwest Transit is applying for, to TAB for regional solicitation funding to expand their prime on demand. By the way, just a note of credibility. Southwest Transit was the very first transit provider in the metro to offer an on-demand option. We were actually second. And now Metro Transit has launched their version of an on-demand service. So lots of innovation coming from the suburban transit providers. And that should do it.
Okay, Tara.
Well, my big thing will be still to come, which will be meeting with DBB. So that's, that's really the big one. Otherwise Dakota Communicator, yeah, Dakota Communications, all that. It's fine. Things are marching along. There's really not a lot going on in there. Awesome equipment buys, but other than that. That's, that's really about it. So probably the next time we do an update, I'll have an update.
Okay, Dan G.
CBB, we meet in August coming up. So it'll be a while before I have a report on that one. That's going to be our board retreat. And I believe coming toward us from the citizens task force is going to be our ordinances on massage.
Councilmember Gustafson, we will, because we had a one section of chapters that over went over into the next meeting. So at this next meeting at the end of May, we'll be approving probably both of the chapters that have been reviewed for the last two months. And, and then we'll have no new information at that time. And then those items will come to the council in June.
So they have no homework for this month when we get there.
Okay. Municipal Legislative Commission, we only meet quarterly. We haven't met. We did, the mayors did meet with the governor. He is very supportive of of our agenda, which is local control. And also he was supportive of local control with regard to housing. There was no savage Burnsville meeting that was canceled. Metro Cities Policy Committees will start in in June and July. Yeah. And so all is good. International Festival is moving along. Okay, Greg, do you have anything to report on?
I don't.
Okay, Michelle? Joel? Okay, if we're all good. We stand adjourned by affirmation. Thank you, everybody.